Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting, tonight's committee of the whole meeting, and tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. I proudly call tonight's city council meeting to order, and I kindly ask our recording secretary to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burghart?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
If I am not out of order, I would kindly ask our new freshman at Geneva High School, Grace, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Sophomore, just for the record.
Oh, sophomore, forgive me, I'm sorry. Good Lord, your dad said you were held back, I feel bad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grace, my deepest apologies. Good Lord. Last time I'd rely on your dad for intel. Item three, folks, new business and public comment, is there anyone with us this evening who has any information they'd like to share with or questions to ask of the city council? Moving forward, under number four, public hearings, special items and presentations, we have number four A, consider mayor's appointment of alderman to the second ward. Members of the city council received an email from me on Saturday afternoon regarding the choice of Mr. Bradley Kocerog to succeed the retirement of Mr. Michael Clements and to fulfill the unexpired term of second ward alderman. Within the body of that email, I explained with great pride and appreciation the work of Alderman Maladra, Alderman Marx, and Alderman Burghart in interviewing 10 candidates, narrowing that field down to three, and then, I think it's fair to say, for the aldermen who participated, very long, very genuine, very passionate, and very purposeful deliberation regarding whom to select. All of you have copies of all the materials each candidate submitted, you have the materials with respect to Mr. Kocerog, you know his background, you know his experience with the city, and again, it's my pleasure to so nominate. I would entertain a motion to put this matter on the floor.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion, Alderman, forgive me, Bruno makes the second. This will require a roll call vote. Madam Recording Secretary, when you're available, thank you.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kocerog, why don't you join us at the podium before we administer the oath? Because you have a fan club with you tonight.
I do have a fan club.
I know it's not your daughter, the freshmen, so we got that clear. Please introduce all your guests.
Well, leading our pledge of allegiance tonight was my sophomore, sophomore daughter, Grace, my wife, Miriam Olson, and my mom, Carol Kerr, behind her.
Fantastic.
And then included in my fan club is Cookie Olson here, too.
Of course. And of course, your mom, we mentioned earlier that mom was going to be on the camera the entire time, and she switched seats.
Oh, shoot, yeah, he's got to adjust in the back room now.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to share with the council and the community tuning in with respect to your tenure in Geneva, your experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission? Perhaps Grace would like to speak, or Miriam, or mom, or anybody else, before we administer the oath?
Actually, can I grab a sheet of paper here real quick? I do have a couple notes right here.
Oh, good Lord, how long is it?
Two seconds.
Okay, I'm kidding.
So I just do want to thank the mayor and the council for their confidence in my ability to fill this position. I did want to thank all the people that I've worked with in the volunteer positions in the city of Geneva, on the Geneva Community Chest with Cookie, Geneva Academic Foundation, and of course, all the commissioners and city staff that I worked with on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last almost four years. I do want to thank my wife, Miriam, and my whole family in advance, as I know this is going to take some time, and I really appreciate her support and love in letting me pursue this. And I just really feel like all the experiences I've had in the city since I moved here, I said I'm going to get involved in the community, and I just think this is really, this appointment just really feels right to me, sort of where things are going, what I've been doing in the city, and I'm really proud to be in this leadership position here. So I look forward to working with everybody on the council, the staff, our honorable mayor, and especially the residents of the second ward. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much. Now, as we indicated before, this is your evening with respect to the administration of the oath, I have the pleasure of administering the oath, but if you would like to invite your family to join you, please join me right here. Let me know when you're ready, okay, guys? Forgive me while I pop on my readers, I'm going to kindly ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bradley Kocerog.
I, Bradley Kocerog.
Having been appointed to the office of alderman in the second ward.
Having been appointed to the alderman of the second ward.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane.
Therefore said.
Paper said.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And Mr. Kocerog, I've pronounced a Kocerog, but how do you prefer it to be pronounced?
Kocerog.
Kocerog?
Yes.
Short A, Kocerog. Kocerog, short O. Short A and short O, it's not case of rogue, okay, got it.
I will watch your all night.
Okay, I know, oh my gosh. We've also had a previous discussion, when mom, and mom, and Grace need to leave, they will leave. Sounds good? I know Grace whispered earlier, I want to stay for the whole thing. Which I thought was interesting, so thank you for being with us tonight, very much, thank you. Item four B, as in boys, consider mayor's appointment of Madeline Cooper and Melanie Mannion to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burghart. As the council knows, the nominees were interviewed by the members of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Those nominations are forwarded to me to simply forward to all of you for ratification. I know from conversations with Mr. McCready and other members of SPAC, they had a good selection, they had great interviews, and I know they're proud to nominate these two ladies. Of course, one of them is our student representative, which is always very exciting. So with that, I'll entertain a voice, or excuse me, a roll call vote whenever Ms. Dawkins is ready.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby? Ruby? I don't see her on the screen either. Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Congratulations to our new.
Got to go back up to Bruno.
Forgive me.
Oh, sorry, Bruno, you're right.
Aye.
Sorry.
One last chance at Ruby?
Ruby, are you there?
Motion is successful. We can always amend as necessary. Item four C, ladies and gentlemen, consider mayor's appointment of Lisa McManus and Don Hartman to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Swanson makes the second. Similar to our experience with Alderman Kocerog.
Well done.
How's that, good?
That was good, yeah.
The Historic Preservation Commission conducted these interviews, and these recommendations were advanced. Sadly, we had a last-minute resignation from the HPC, a gentleman who served with great distinction and honor, accepted a position out of state and had to leave ASAP. So we had two great candidates, and I'm grateful to certainly the chair of HPC and others who participated in that selection process. So tonight, we have these two nominees, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Are any of the nominees present? I don't think so. Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Congratulations to Ms. McManus and Mr. Hartman, thank you very much. Item five, folks, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item number six is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman McGowan makes that motion? And Alderman Marx makes the second? We have a question, Alderman Kocerog?
I may have just missed the motion, but I was wondering if we could break out for more than a minute from that last city council meeting.
He can just abstain, since he wasn't on the council then.
What do you, per the city attorney's recommendation, abstaining, are you comfortable with that?
Of course.
Okay.
So is that on all items, then?
I mean, just on the, with respect to the approving minutes.
The minutes, okay.
Okay.
Just show that.
Yep.
Whenever you're ready, Stephanie?
Okay, Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Item passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item number 10, under other items, nothing? Okay, item 11, municipal bills for payment, folks, we kindly ask our, well, I guess our recording secretary, to read the bills as presented in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills total $2,906,457.25.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packet and on the city's website, is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Burghart. Alderman Kocerog, you have a comment?
I do, one of the bills to be paid, I have a business relationship with, Walker Process Equipment, and I'd just like to disclose that.
So disclosed, thank you very much. And for those of you curious, the alderman met with our city attorney prior to the meeting to share that disclosure, and it is the advice of our city attorney for the alderman to speak accordingly. Any other questions or comments? Stephanie, whenever you're ready.
Okay, Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Item 11 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 12 had been considered under the consent agenda, item 13A is consider resolution number 2020-63, authorizing execution of the Seventh Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement for Tricom Central Dispatch. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins, if anything?
Sure, so I just wanted, I'm going to give you a summary of A and B together, just because they both involve Tricom, and Tricom does have its own board of directors. So both items received unanimous approval from the Tricom Board of Directors, on which Alderman Bruno, Chief Antonori, and Chief Pastorelli are all representatives of the city of Geneva. The first item is to approve a Seventh Amendment to the IGA between the cities of Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles relating to Tricom. During a recent audit by the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, the auditors requested clarification that the city of Geneva, who is the lead agency under the IGA, is the employer of record for purposes of IMRF contributions. This does not change how employees of Tricom are currently reported or how the contributions are funded. And then the second item for your consideration this evening is a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to facilitate a capital project intended to remediate groundwater filtration problem affecting the basement of the Tricom facility. As Tricom is not a standalone entity but rather created through the IGA, the first item requires final approval from the three cities and the budget amendment by this body only. As stated previously, both resolutions were unanimously approved by the Tricom Board of Directors. If there are additional questions, we do have Finance Director Cruz and Fire Chief Antonori here, and Alderman Bruno present, if you need any clarification.
Thank you, Stephanie, any questions or comments for the three folks referenced by Ms. Dawkins regarding this matter? Keeping in mind, of course, that item B is somewhat related as well. On item 13A, seeing no questions, hearing no comments. Alderman Kilburg?
Yep, I had a question.
Alderman Kilburg, I didn't know you, I'm sorry, I didn't see the light on, so usually a hand raised would be helpful, because I can't see that far, unfortunately.
I had a question in regard to a stipend for the city of Geneva as it relates to the accounting related to this undertaking. Could you explain how the city of Geneva is reimbursed for the time Geneva staff dedicates to it?
Sure, the city of Geneva staff on a monthly basis, oh, sorry. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Rita Cruz, Finance Director. The city of Geneva is reimbursed for a percentage of specific staff's time for the work that we do for Tricom. So it's about six or seven staff members, very small percentage, we bill it on a monthly basis to Tricom, and they reimburse us back.
Approximately, what would that be on a monthly basis? Because I would expect that that would be pretty repetitive, wouldn't it be?
Yes, I believe, Stephanie may be looking it up right now, it is in your bill run, you do see that actual expense come from Tricom and over to the city. It is typically about the same amount, other than when there's a third payroll of a month, and then there's obviously three instead of two, but I'm going to say 5,200, but I'm really not sure, but I know she is checking.
We can pause a moment until Stephanie looks that up.
Sorry, just took me a minute to get in the system. There you go. That's the wrong place. Give me, it's not under vendors. No, under Miss Lani's billing, under customers. Okay, sorry. Inquiry. Customers, got it. Customer's actually us. And I don't have access to that. Okay, it is in the, it's in the bill run that you just recently approved, or it's in the prior one, I don't remember which one, but it is on a monthly basis, and I can look it up and get back to you, so you have an idea of how much it is.
How do you identify it?
When we look at, during budgeting on an annual basis, we look at all of our positions that are allocated and how much time we do spend for Tricom, and during the budget process, we do relook at that allocation and make those decisions.
But how do we, how do we know that it's Tricom? Because, is it, is it, in other words, is it a receivable then?
Yeah, so for the city of Geneva, it becomes a receivable, and for Tricom, it is a payable.
Okay.
So we bill Tricom.
Okay.
That dollar amount, they quote pay us, you know, and then we get the money back for what?
Understood, yeah.
Okay.
And where do you find that, in the documents, the municipal bills for payment, or?
Yes, you would see that under the Tricom portion.
Okay.
Under the, in the bottom half, I guess you could call it, of the bills for payment.
Has our auditors have any issues with this at all, historically?
No, we've been doing this since, you know, the city of Geneva has been the lead agency since 1970.
It's never been referenced in any of the audits. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? On item 13A, ladies and gentlemen, roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Item 13A passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 13B, which we provided a summary via Stephanie Dawkins just moments ago, consider resolution number 2020-64, authorizing a fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget amendment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marx makes the motion?
Second.
And seconded by McGowan, anything additionally you want to add, Stephanie, or?
No, I was still trying to see if I could grab this real quick, but such luck. Sorry.
Any questions or comments regarding item 13B, ladies and gentlemen? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Dawkins, roll call.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Item 13B passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 13C, consider ordinance number 2020-21, amending Title 11 zoning of the City of Geneva Code, Section 11-7B-2, permitted uses, to expand the list of permitted uses in the I-1 light industrial district to include, quote, automobile sales, outdoor storage prohibited, end quote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by? Seconded by Kocerog. Ms. Dawkins?
So the applicant, Saddlewood Enterprises Illinois LLC, would like to open an independent automobile dealership at 2,000 Gary Lane, Geneva, Illinois, which is located in the I-1 light industrial district. The applicant will be leasing approximately 4,000 to 5,000 square feet of the building, with the option to lease additional space as they grow. Their business will be the sales of motor vehicles over the internet, with all vehicles being stored indoors. Automobile sales are currently only allowed in the B5 business district as a permitted use, or the B4 business district as a special use. Therefore, the applicant has requested to amend the I-1 light industrial district to make automobile sales, outdoor storage prohibited, a permitted use. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested amendment. We do have David DeGroot here this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for the director, Mr. DeGroot? Do we have the applicant present as well? That's what I thought. Anyone would like to hear from the applicant, anything you'd like to say, sir?
You guys don't have any questions?
We go first, okay? If not, a roll call, oh, Alderman Burghart?
I'm sorry, can we hear from the applicant? Can you tell us a bit about your business and business model, and why you think this location is the right one for you?
My name is James Smith, and the managing member of Saddlewood Enterprises. I've been in the auto industry for 25 years, it's just a segment that seems to be taking off, I think there's opportunity to, you know, grow and prosper, you know, I don't know quite what to expect yet, but, you know, I've got the basic, you know, again, I've been doing this for quite a few years, and the customer base that I have right now will help support me, I just, like, you know, I'll just kind of take it as it comes, I still have another full-time job that I'm going to kind of edge my way into this, but I think, you know, the indoor space and the property, the opportunity I have with this building on Gary Lane, it's just kind of, it's, you know, an opportunistic time, you know, for me to take advantage of it, so, and there's nothing really for me or the city of Geneva to lose.
Very good, all right, thanks for being here, and good luck.
Anyone else? Anyone remotely? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Dawkins, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item 13C passes unanimously with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, folks, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Alderman Swanson, roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
We have adjourned the city council meeting, without objection, we'll just jump into the committee of the whole meeting. I proudly recognize that we have a full house tonight, Alderman Ruby is remote, the other nine council members and committee members are present. Any new business from anyone, which of course means Cookie in the audience? And we have no commentary online?
No, sir.
Item three, approve special and regular committee of the whole minutes from August 17, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any comments or questions regarding the minutes, folks? Madam Recording Secretary?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Burghart?
I didn't see a mention of Alderman Kilburg's motion to adjourn in our minutes.
I'm going to, I'll take a stab at it, but I'm going to defer to the city attorney to assist me on that, it's my understanding that if a motion was not recognized, the motion, for all practical purposes, doesn't exist, is that a fair statement, Mr. City Attorney, or no?
It's certainly a fair interpretation, and given that it wasn't recognized and it wasn't entertained, it would not be reflective in the minutes.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg?
I guess I was recognized. I had the floor and I made a motion to adjourn, and it was dismissed for being not recognized. So how do you get recognized when you want to adjourn? I guess I would ask our attorney to clarify that.
Well, let me answer that first and I'll ask the attorney to clarify me. A motion to adjourn, first of all and foremost, whoever wishes to speak needs to be recognized.
I was.
Okay. You were also speaking to a different matter than, as I recall, and we can certainly watch the tape, then you threw in at the end of that commentary a motion to adjourn as well. And I did not recognize that, the last salvo, if you will.
I would, uh...
This is my recollection, so.
I would indicate that I would overrule the Chair's ruling as it relates to that matter.
You're asking to overrule the Chair's matter regarding the August 17 decision?
Right, as it related to the motion to adjourn.
I will defer to the City Attorney with respect to the timing of that request.
I... Alderman, are you asking to overrule the Chair with respect to a ruling made at a prior meeting?
I'm asking for a clarification as it relates to the interpretation of the recorded minutes and if they are accurate.
Okay, that's a little different than what I thought I heard you say. Would I, in my response to Alderman Burghart's comments, I don't change my answer.
Did the, did the motion to adjourn actually take place?
No.
I made, I made the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
It took place, the motion to adjourn.
Alderman, I did a memo on this item specifically with respect to some of the questions you and other Aldermen had. You made, I heard your comment, it wasn't recognized, and it was not challenged at that time. Had you or another Alderman sought to overrule the interpretation or the ruling of the Chair, and that was seconded, that would have been perfectly proper. And that would have been subject to the majority of this tribunal. That did not occur. So the Chair's ruling stands.
If we want to amend the minutes to reflect that, then how do we go about doing that, sir?
Well, you want to reflect the minutes or you want to reflect the action? That's what I'm having a hard time.
The minutes is what she referred to.
So you want the minutes to reflect that a motion to adjourn occurred?
And was not recognized. Is what you're saying, happened.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'd like to see the minutes amended to reflect that a motion to adjourn was made and was not recognized. We've, I know we've amended the minutes from up here before.
Is that appropriate?
That is appropriate.
Certainly.
Okay.
The motion to amend the minutes of the August 17 meeting to reflect that a motion to adjourn was made by Alderman Kilburg but was not recognized by the Chair has been seconded by Alderman Swanson. Any discussion on that? Motion to amend. Alderman Swanson?
Becky.
Oh, forgive me, Alderman Ruby. Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. So my question, I think, is germane to this topic. If Alderman Kilburg's request wasn't recognized, why was it required that we I don't remember the terminology, but we had to, like, second to the second in the meeting to actually make the decision? That's what we went round and round for 90 minutes, I believe, on?
If I may, I'll take a stab. Do I understand you correctly that by not recognizing the motion to adjourn? Is your question, why did we dis... Why wasn't that recognized? Or how could you have had it recognized? Or how could you have overruled the Chair?
I think there was just a lot of... There's, there was so much confusion in that meeting and there was so much going on that the minutes did not touch on. And I do think it's important to include more details in our minutes of what actually occurred in that meeting.
I'm going to, if, if, well, if anyone objects, by all means do so, but I'm going to ask both the City Administrator and the City Attorney to opine based on historical evidence of what minutes are. Minutes are not a verbatim recording of a meeting. So minutes have never reflected exactly everything that happened in a meeting. However, a motion to amend the minutes is certainly appropriate. But our minutes do not capture everything that was said, discussed, debated at a meeting. It simply captures the highlights of that meeting as it leads to action. But if anyone wants to amend those minutes, it's permissible, absolutely. That's my interpretation.
So, so in order to do that, would, would we just not approve the minutes tonight? Would we just vote nay on item number three?
No, just amend them. Alderman Burghart and Alderman Swanson offered a motion to amend to reflect that, that commentary by Alderman Kilburg.
Okay.
And there have been numerous times before where minutes have been amended, whether it be a scrupulous error, whether it be a, actually I wasn't present, or actually I voted no, or, oh yeah, it happens quite a bit, but Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I certainly would not object to any type of amendment to the minutes, especially if there was some, something in particular that took place at the meeting that was important to any number of Aldermen on this council. And because after all, we do have the video recording of the entire meeting that's available on YouTube or through the City of Geneva website. So I think that's absolutely fair if, you know, I would, I don't see why reason, I don't have a reason why the minutes could not be amended to include some extra information that took place. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
On the motion to amend, anyone else?
Clarification, under Robert's rules to adjourn a meeting, obviously you need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can the speaker be interrupted? No. Does it need a second? It says yes, but our legal counsel has said that we don't need a second to adjourn. Is that correct?
With respect to concluding a meeting, tip, like, on a regular meeting, you do not. If there is a contested question intending to conclude a meeting before it's supposed to conclude, a second is appropriate.
Okay, but the action on the prior item on the agenda had been resolved. There was a motion to table, it was a 5-3 vote, which means then we should go to the, to any other remaining items on the agenda. There were none, so a motion to adjourn would be in order. Is that correct?
The motion was not out of order, Alderman. It was not, it wasn't accepted by the Chair as being proper.
Okay. Can this be debated? No.
No.
Can this be amended?
Yes.
Robert's rule says no.
Well, it depends on what you're doing, so if you were...
Explain that to me.
Well, I'm trying to, Alderman. The crux of your motion was at least deemed by the Chair as not being responsive to what he, evidently you were arguing or making a point and then you moved to adjourn. He didn't recognize it as appropriate.
I would dispute that because I believe I went directly to request adjournment of the meeting, and that there was no discussion.
I, I don't recall the transcript or the video will bear out one way or the other, but no one made a motion to overrule the Chair, which is what should have occurred.
And if we would have moved forward, then a majority vote would have determined that we'd adjourned at that point in time.
Sure, that's correct.
So there was no other business before the council at that point in time. In other words, we concluded our discussion as it related to the item and question related to BASH. Is that correct?
I don't know if it's correct or not. There was much discussion that occurred after that.
But a motion to table, sir, is non-debatable, and we debated it for an hour and 30 minutes.
Right.
It was out of order.
Did anyone make a motion that it was out of order?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Right, and you didn't seek to overturn the Chair's ruling?
Well, I guess we all learned a lesson from the 17th, and we're going to study parliamentary procedure, and we're going to use it to the hilt.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? Roll call vote, Stephanie?
Swanson?
Yes. Alderman?
I made a motion to overrule the Chair as it relates to the minutes. Where does that stand?
You made a motion to change the minutes.
Correcting the minutes.
Right, that's what we're voting on.
That's an amendment. Are we voting on the amendment or are we voting on all the minutes that initially presented? Clarification.
We're voting on the amendment.
On the amendment offered by Alderman Burghart and seconded by Alderman Swanson.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Epstein.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
That amendment passes, so we are back to the main motion as amended, and that is regarding the minutes from August 17, 2020, for both the Committee of the Whole and Special Committee of the Whole, Special Minutes, excuse me. Anything else requiring amending or any comments regarding those minutes as amended? Whenever you're ready, Stephanie?
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Epstein.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, item 3 passes unanimously. Excuse me, one abstention, forgive me. Item 4A, Items of Business, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of a 2020 Employee Benefit Plan Renewal Effective November 1, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, and seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the resolution for your consideration this evening relates to the renewal of the employee medical, dental, vision, and life insurance plans. The renewal proposes a 4.64% increase in the medical plan and a 0% increase to the dental plans with a 1.58% increase in the administrative fees paid to Delta Dental for administering the city's self-insured dental plan. In addition, the life insurance proposal is for a two-year rate guarantee with no increase. We do have Assistant City Administrator Ben McCready along with Boomer Whipple from Lundstrom, who's the city's broker, to answer any additional questions or provide clarification.
Any questions or comments for either Mr. McCready or Mr. Whipple? Alderman Ruby, remotely, any questions or comments? Anyone present? Alderman Burghart?
Yes, if Ben could come on up. Thank you for answering these. Can we talk about what our split of premiums are between the employees and the city? And, excuse me if we did receive this.
No, the split between premium...
So how much, I mean, we have in our packet what our employees pay?
I believe that's 83% is on the city. There's a little fluctuation here with dollars and cents on each, on each individual one, but...
Depends how big, if it's a single or a couple or a family.
There's a little fraction of a percentage there, but in general, about 83%.
Is that pretty standard, what we've had over the last few years?
Yeah, no, that, that stays the same. That's not been amended since, since I have joined the city, or any time, I believe, recently before.
And the same the whole time I've been with the city, 12 years.
Is that what we?
Probably prior to that.
Is that what we aim for then, every year is about the city?
Yeah, so that, the, the percentages are spelled out as far as the city's contribution versus the employees' contribution are spelled out in the personal policy manual, and then all of the collective bargaining agreements refer to what unrepresented employees get. And I think the percentages are actually in the union contract, but what the union contracts also provide is that we can make any plan design changes, anything we need to do, as long as those percentages don't change, and as long as it's the same as what unrepresented employees receive. So it's roughly 90% for an employee, single, and then 80% for employee plus one or family. And the reason there's a percentage difference is because the calculation is you take the premium for a single, subtract it out from the whole premium, and then take that 80%.
So is it pretty much even, then, you're saying, union and non-union employees?
All employees are the same.
Same.
There is no distinction when it comes to insurance benefits.
And is that common among city plans?
As far as there not being a distinction, I think each organization is unique, but I think the way, the way Geneva does it is, is not unlike other communities.
And we offer four, we have four options, is it, for health?
Yes.
Plans, a PPO, or HMO?
Two HMOs.
Two HMOs.
And then you've got the, the high deductible plan there as well, so.
And we, I mean, we've done a good job of keeping it in line. I see that it's kind of evened out. We had the big decrease even one year. I just wonder if, I think all of us up here have been affected some way by COVID and jobs and benefits being cut and bonuses being cut, even furloughs and layoffs, and I just wonder if this isn't, wasn't maybe a lost opportunity to ask our employees to pick up a bit more of their healthcare costs and share the burden with taxpayers. We haven't had any furloughs, we haven't had any layoffs at city staff, correct?
No.
And a lot of industries have, a lot of municipalities have, a lot of school districts have. I value our employees, I just know health insurance is a huge cost, and it's a cost that keeps going up, and I feel like, I've been on the council five years now and we keep just seeing the same plan every year, and I just don't know if that's reasonable long-term. I would, look, I'd be for universal healthcare, honestly, if it's between all of us, but as long as we're in the current system we are, I just, I don't know if we need to start looking at how other governmental entities are, are handling health insurance. It's, this is the kind of plan I had about 20 years ago when I was a union journalist. I, I haven't seen this go to plan in a long time, so, thank you.
Anyone else, Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Along with what Alderman Burghart said, if you look at the increases, we, 2020 is the largest increase we've had in the last five years, and we, we've actually been pretty lucky for the last five years, and we haven't had any pain from health insurance. Now it seems to be swinging the other way, so I, I would like to request that we make this a discussion point at our strategic planning session going forward to review what other neighboring communities have in place and what we could do to modify our plan to control this cost. Is that something we could do at this time?
So you're talking for future plan years?
Yes, I'm talking for future plan years. My worry is the 4.64 could have been 9 or 10%, and we'd be looking at a lot larger dollars. I'd like to ask the gentleman here from the firm, what rates of increase you're seeing in the marketplace is, 4.64 good or terrible?
That's a good question. Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me through this thing.
Yes, sir.
Most of the surveys for companies of your size are...
Just go ahead and introduce yourself first, just for everybody's...
Boomer Whipple, Executive Vice President at Lundstrom Insurance. Good to see everybody. Most of the surveys for employers of your size, the average increase is, for 2020, is around 6%. That's been unchanged over the last four or five years. Your, your average increase has been 1.62%, I think, over the last five years, so you are a little bit ahead of the curve, but I think you're, you're right to think about long-term, how do we stand compared to other municipalities and communities? I will say that it came in at 9% this year, and it was deserved. Your, your claims were up 35% over where they were last year, which is about 700,000. Large claims were up about 105%. So that was the initial increase. Obviously, we do what we can do with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the threat of marketing to other carriers and whatnot to try and get that down. We were pleasantly surprised that we were able to get it down to 4.6. You may remember last year it came in at 2.7%. We were able to get it down to 1.2. So your five-year average has been really good. I think your three-year average is 0.4% increase, but there's a lot of factors that go into the renewal when they, when the underwriters promulgate what the new rates will be, but the big factor this year was claims. Thankfully, the city hasn't been hit with any major COVID, knock on wood, situations, but there are some large claims out there that impacted the renewal this year.
Would initiatives for employee health assist us in reducing our rates?
I think that the city's done a really good job via the employee meetings and the wellness initiatives that you have to keep, to make sure that the employees are taking advantage of the preventative. You do have virtual visits that were introduced three years ago for your PPO plans. 50% of your employees are still on one of the two HMO plans, which is really good. That's the biggest cost containment you can have, is having more employees on the HMO program. So I think that the city is doing everything they can to promote preventative, to promote wellness. There are some times you just have large claims, and claims will be claims, and they can, you can throw out all the wellness initiatives and all the preventative measures that you can, it's not going to prevent sometimes large claims from happening. So I think the city's done a pretty good job. I think your participation in the employee meetings is really good. We do employee meeting here, and then we also do one at the Public Works Building every year. We're doing them again in a week and a half, next week. The participation's good, and we walk through all of the different wellness initiatives. I know that you used to have the health fair, I think we're going to put that on hold for this year because of the circumstances, but I think the city's done a pretty good job, better than most of our clients in terms of promoting wellness and promoting preventative.
And do you have any suggestions or ways that municipalities can put a cap on these increases that we could consider going forward? What, what would we do if this was a 15% increase? Is there a way that you can change the, the plans or the options that are out there to give us a little of insurance, if you will, that we're not going to see huge increases going forward?
Great question, and yeah, there are measures, there are other options within Blue Cross Blue Shield that we review to say, hey, do we want to use these arrows in the quiver now or save them for a year like you're talking about? Hopefully, we don't see one of those. There are also other markets. I mean, whether it's Aetna, Humanis, Cigna, there's a lot of other carriers. The one thing that we've run into, though, the last couple of years when we have marketed is your actual rates themselves are pretty competitive, and the last three times we've gone to market, three of the four carriers have declined a quote because they can't be competitive. But I would say that the best option is, we introduced the high deductible health plan about four years ago. The encouragement of people going into the HMO, there are some people that love HMOs, there are some people that hate them, but you can't deny the fact that the cost containment measures that are incumbent upon an HMO are, do work, and the fact that you have 50% of your employees on the HMO helps you. I've got a lot of clients that would really like to have that type of penetration into the HMO.[1748.81] So to answer your, I know I'm in a roundabout way answering your question. Reviewing alternate plan options, whether that's tweaking deductibles, tweaking co-pays, those are other options that you have available to you if you run into a situation where you have, you know, a horrible storm, where you have a horrible claims year, the demographics really go in a bad way. You have other options within Blue Cross Blue Shield to reduce the increase, and you also have alternate carriers as well.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important that we have a robust conversation now while we're looking at four-point-six-four as opposed to reacting in the future. So I, I look forward to our, our strategic planning session on that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else in the dais for either Mr. Whipple or Mr. McCready? Alderman Kossarog?
I was also going to ask if we've done any sort of analysis versus our local municipalities and what insurance plans are being offered. Maybe that could be part of this strategic plan thing that Alderman Swanson's talking about, and Alderman Burghart. So I would like to see that in the future. Have we ever done that in the past?
We have. It's just been a couple of years.
Yeah, so maybe it would be a good time to revisit if, if we put it on that.
When we did it, we did find that we were right comparable with our other municipalities.
And then I was just wondering, as you talk about the increases, from, I don't know, it's an actuarial point of view or whatever, do they take those major claims that we've had, and do they kind of spread them out over a couple of years? So in other words, are we looking at increases next year because of the claims from this past year? If that makes any sense?
No, it makes a lot of sense, and it's a good question. So it depends upon the market size. For, for an employer in your market segment, the way that they review your actual claims experience is they use twenty-four months of data. So the current twelve months and the prior twelve months, and they give weighting seventy-five percent to current, twenty-five percent to prior. And then when they do that calculation, you're not large enough, you know, your hundred-and-eighty employees, where it's a hundred percent credible. So once they take the seventy-five percent weighting of the current, twenty-five percent of the prior, they then give you, City of Geneva this year got seventy percent credibility. So seventy percent credibility to your own claims experience, thirty percent to Blue Cross Blue Shield's manual experience, and that's how they calculate the rates. You do, though, to your point, have a seventy-five-thousand-dollar pooling limit so that any large claims over seventy-five thousand do not go towards your claims experience. So that's the real answer, is you're only capped up to seventy-five thousand. So some of the large claims from this current period will be on the, on the renewal part next year, but they'll be capped at seventy-five thousand, and it's only twenty-five percent weighting towards next year's renewal.
So the, let's back more to Stephanie. Is the open enrollment for the city is like a couple of weeks from now?
Yeah, so our, our plan year renews November first. We do open enrollment usually like mid-September to mid-October.
So maybe we could plan for next year to maybe have this discussion earlier so that if we could make changes.
To Alderman Swanson's point, we do strategic planning in November.
Okay.
And that's when we set the budget.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
And again, I would say we do look at, Ben and I do meet with Boomer when he comes with the renewal and look at all options and whether it makes sense, as, as Boomer indicated, to, to make some of those plan design changes this year when it's not the nine percent, or to have those available so that when we hit a bad year, we, and we've done that in the past, you may recall. We've made adjustments to the RX plans, to the deductible plans. We, we've kind of done a little bit, just again, so that we try to make it more of an even thing instead of so volatile.
Anyone else in the dais for either gentleman present or Stephanie? Whenever you're ready, Stephanie, roll call vote, please.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
The motion passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item four C, recommend draft resolution authorizing the purchase of sixteen. Oops, four B, forgive me. Consider draft resolution amending section six-point-nine of the City of Geneva's Personnel Policy Manual. Forgive me. Is there a motion on item four B?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Kossarog. Ms. Dawkins?
So the city's Personnel Policy Manual ensures that the city remains compliant with regulations and acts in a consistent manner. For these reasons, staff is recommending changes to the language regarding holiday pay. For the recommended changes, eligible employees working on a designated city holiday would be permitted to elect compensatory time or receive the holiday pay as outlined in the Personnel Policy Manual. The updated language would apply to all full-time, non-exempt employees in the police department who are not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. This would be consistent with what has been practiced of how holiday pay has been handled in the past but was not reflected in the Personnel Policy Manual. Again, we have Assistant City Administrator McCready to answer any additional questions.
Questions or comments for Mr. McCready or Ms. Dawkins? Anyone remotely? Roll call vote, please.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra? Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
The motion passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Now for a second time, item four C, forgive me. Recommend draft resolution authorizing the purchase of sixteen set of personal protective clothing from W.S. Darley at an estimated cost of thirty-two thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan? And seconded by, seconded by Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
So the request is to purchase sixteen new sets, coats and pants, of personal protective clothing, otherwise known as turnout gear. The National Fire Protection Act eighteen-fifty-one's standard on selection care and maintenance of protective ensembles for structural firefighting and proximity firefighting state that gear is to be retired ten years after the date of manufacture. This standard covers helmets, gloves, coats, pants, hoods, and boots. Some gear, depending upon use and wear, has to be retired before the ten-year anniversary. The lowest qualified quotes were from W.S. Darley. This supports the strategic plan objective of providing the equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient and reliable public services. And we have Chief Antonori with us this evening to answer any additional questions.
Questions or comments for either Ms. Dawkins or the chief, Chief A. Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra? Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Item four C passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item four D, consider draft resolution to waive competitive bidding and accept a proposal from RLS Landscaping Incorporated for State Street Brick Repair Project in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand and fifty dollars. Is there a motion? Motion by Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the fiscal year twenty-one infrastructure capital budget includes twenty-five thousand dollars for streetscape and median repair. The work to be completed includes the removal and replacement of the brick ribbon along State Street. The bricks will be removed, gravel and sand will be added for leveling purposes, and broken bricks will be replaced. Over the past five years, RLS has been the only contractor to submit a quote for this type of work. Staff has been pleased with the quality of work and the timeliness in which the work is completed. And joining us this evening is Superintendent Landers to present or answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at all for Ms. Dawkins or the superintendent, Mr. Landers? Alderman Swanson?
Uh, thank you. This is for Landers, Nate Landers. I walked the State Street sidewalk this, this afternoon, and I didn't think it was in deplorable condition. And there are a few swales or buckles, if you will, and a few broken bricks. So my question is, is this a deferrable expense, given the financial situation that municipalities are finding themselves in? And a second part of that would be, are we putting ourselves at risk for further deterioration if we were to wait one year or two years to do this work?
I'll answer, well, I suppose I got to introduce myself, right? Nathan Landers, Superintendent of the Streets. I'll answer the first, or the second half of your question first. I, with the, with the frost and all the different things that we, all the different temperature fluctuations that we have throughout the year, those bricks move, heave up and down quite a bit. So I would, I would imagine that we would see more deterioration along those lines in, in more of those spots, all up and down State Street. Typically, we do, well, we, obviously, we do about twenty-five thousand dollars a year worth of brickwork. We've done all of Third Streets. We did State, State Street from Fourth to Seventh last year, both sides. We do need to continue on down. It does provide, or it does, does offer a trip hazard to, to people walking down the streets. We have had several of those occur, so this is a way to keep that from happening. The second, or the first half of your question there, it, we have deferred it up to this point, waiting for financialists to come in to see if we could, we could do this. I would defer to you guys on that. If you want to try and do that, we, I don't know that I'd push that, but I, I would, I would prefer to attack it and, and fix it now before we run into an issue where we're paying an insurance claim at X amount of dollars versus twenty-five thousand dollars to fix it now.
Okay, is there, is there a benefit if we were to request double the amount to do at one time? I mean, you said you did, we, we did Fourth to Seventh, we're doing First to Fourth this time. If we were to do that whole bit, do the landscaping companies tend to like that, having a larger project to work on and get a better pricing?
Well, I'm sure they would love to have a bigger project, yes. Would we get a better price? Possibly. Historically, we've only had one person submit a quote to us. I don't have an answer for why. We've asked multiple vendors for the last five years to, to give us a quote and just have not been able to do so, but it may help. The size of the project may be a, may be an issue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments or questions for Mr. Landers? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nate. Kind of a construction question. The, the brick ribbons, those bricks are on like sand and soil, or is there something underneath those?
There is a concrete, there is a piece of concrete underneath, but it also sits on some gravel and some sand. So the concrete is there to try to help it from fluctuating as much as it does, but unfortunately with brick, it, it is going to heave, it is going to.
And that concrete is not part of the sidewalk pore?
It is not part of the sidewalk pore, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kossarog?
The, I see the cost is eighty-four fifty per hour from the landscapers, is that right?
That is for parking lots, no removal. It's a total cost.
My question is still the same, though. Is that consistent with the other projects we've done in the same regard, the same pricing?
Yes, in the same scope of work, yes.
And then the bricks are, sorry. The bricks are not included. Does that mean it's going to go above that, or the bricks that are not included are included in this cost?
Bricks are, I'm sorry, the bricks are supplied by, by the city. We have purchased those, and we have them in stock.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
When they remove them, we, we supply the bricks for them to put back.
Gotcha. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins?
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Item four D passes with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item four E is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Edge Landscaping. Is that, should be Accurate Edge? Should be Accurate Edge Landscaping for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one commuter parking lot, snow removal in the amount of eighty-four fifty per hour. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Burghart. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the fiscal year twenty-one budget provides for the removal of snow from downtown city parking lots and commuter parking lots utilizing a contractor when two or more inches of snow have fallen. The city released an RFP and received three proposals. After reviewing the proposal, staff determined that the proposal from Accurate Edge Landscaping Services was the only proposal to submit all of the required documents. Accurate Edge has held the contract previously, and staff has been satisfied with their preparedness and response time. They proposed performing the parking lot snow removal work at a cost of eighty-four dollars and fifty cents per hour. On average, the city utilizes this service six times per snow season, and it typically takes five hours to clear the snow from all parking lots. This is a one-year contract with an optional renewal for years two and three, depending upon budget approval by the city council. And again, we still have Superintendent Landers here if you have any additional questions.
Questions for either Ms. Dawkins or Superintendent Landers? Alderman Maladra?
Yeah. Nate, so I'm a commuter, I'm in that lot, like, or I used to be in, anyway, in that lot a lot. And, you know, there are times when, when the snow doesn't get plowed, probably because there's cars in there when the snow event happens. Then it hardens and it turns to ice, and the ice just sits there for weeks. And it's pretty treacherous. You know, I see people slipping all the time. Is there any way that we can contract with these guys to get in on a weekend or an evening, if there's a daytime snow event, to clear it out when the lots are empty?
Yes, actually, the contract does call for them to perform the service between a certain timeframe, usually between two AM and six AM for the commuter lots, and then up to eight AM for the additional lots throughout the downtown. Typically, we try to use them after a snowfall. I guess we could bring them in on a weekend if, but that is going to drive your cost up, obviously, to do so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. How many parking lot, how, how many parking spaces are in the commuter lot that is covered by this snow plowing plan?
That is a wonderful question, which I would only lie to you because I honestly don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, and I guess what I'm getting at is, just driving by the commuter lot on a daily basis, there are about twenty cars using it. And I would propose or, or ask if there is some way we could close off half of the parking lot to save cost on plowing it because it's not being used. And, and determine what we need, have some cushion. But it seems like we're going through the motions of everything as if everything's normal, and it's not. And, and why spend the money to clear the snow from a parking lot no one ever uses? So I, I would like us to give some thought to figuring out, how can we shut off half the parking lot, not have any additional liability, obviously, that no one can get in there, and not have to pay Accurate Edge eighty-four dollars and fifty cents an hour to clear it for no, no particular reason? So if that's possible, I'd like that to be considered.
I just, I just wanted to step in because I don't think that's a fair question to ask the superintendent. My name is Richard Bavica, Director of Public Works. I, I think that's more of a policy discussion than an operational question. The street superintendent's job is to ensure the safe and adequate transverse of the, the public roads and parking lots throughout the community, and that's what he's presenting here tonight. If, if the city council so chooses to close off the public parking lots or the commuter lots, the one thing that I would, the one common refrain that I hear a lot from business owners, the chamber, restaurateurs, even with the restricted operations that they're doing, is the need for convenient parking. And that while those commuter lots may not be used, we still have an obligation for public safety to ensure that the first responders can get to all the city's assets that were either under contract to own or lease, as well as providing for every opportunity for the local economy and businesses to maximize their use. But I would respectfully defer that question to the city council that if the city council so chooses to close off its commuter parking lots or its downtown parking spaces, that that would be answered by, by the ten of you and not be put on the back of a superintendent.
And I apologize, Nate, I was not trying to put you on the spot. I was just trying to think on the fly here of what we can do to save the city money during a pandemic and not do something that's unnecessary. So if it's a city council decision, I think we ought to, we ought to tackle it.
Alderman Burghart?
Yeah, and I guess I listened to what Alderman Swanson said, and I certainly didn't hear him saying, close the commuter parking garage. He said, should we think about, you know, is there one deck of it that's not going to be used because no one's commuting into the city? And I think that's a legitimate question, and we are in terms of a, we are in a pandemic, and you're right. I think, I'm glad the city's moving forward, but we do need to have some of these conversations. And if, if that's a, a good idea, I think we should discuss. And again, Nate might not be the right person to answer it, but I'm glad you brought it up. I certainly am not looking to cut down on needed parking, but we are in a new world where that, that parking lot is just not being used by our Metro commuters, who usually packed it, you know, by eight AM most days. So, thank you.
For, for Alderman Kilburg?
I had a question. The lot on twenty-five and East State Street, is that one of the lots that's plowed then on a regular basis as well?
that's plowed then on a regular basis as well?
There are several lots. Are you on the south side or the...
South side.
Yes.
That's plowed?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The activity level there is nil, except for a resident there, or two. I mean, taking into consideration Alderman Swanson's comments, I would think that that would be a candidate that could be dramatically reduced as far as spaces that be plowed. I've never seen a car all the way to the south end of that lot. Is there any way that we can identify activities, levels at some of these lots, or especially that lot, that I'm very aware of and I watch on a regular basis to see if there's any activity in there? Is there any car counts, or would there be any way that we could identify that information that might help the council in trying to determine if we could cut back in some of these areas?
Certainly. I don't have a car count, but I could certainly make a recommendation based off of what I've seen, observations of my own, that I could certainly give that a recommendation.
It's patrolled on a regular basis, so I think maybe even an observation as relates to a lot like that, that is so underutilized, would be, as far as I'm concerned, that would be one of the prime candidates, maybe even more than the commuter lot. And if it saves us a couple thousand dollars a year, it might be worth taking a look at. Thank you.
Alderman Caven?
Thank you. Is the contract written in such a way that we would be able to approve this? And if we did have a discussion about different potential places, this being one of them, and whatever all else that we're going to discuss over the next couple of months, an area to save money? If this is just saying what the cost is per hour, even if this got approved, if we adjusted and there was certain areas that we didn't want to have open, or that we found out that were not being utilized, and you communicated with this organization that, well, hey, we're not going to do these lots anymore, there isn't anything in there that guarantees exactly what lots it'll be every time. This is, you may never know how many times it's going to snow anyway. So that is something that could be decided later, even if we went ahead and approved this? Is that, am I correct?
I would first defer that to the city attorney.
Yeah, I have not seen the draft contract yet, but I think you're exactly right, and I think that would be on an as-needed basis or a call. And I think, again, I have not seen it, so we could probably make changes in the way you have addressed them. I think that seems reasonable.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking a question that way is I agree with several things that were said, and I think that, you know, the overall finances of the city and with many of the things that we maybe are still going to face over the course of the next few months, hopefully only the next few months, but God knows how long, I think there's going to be a lot of things we need to look at. I'm definitely willing to include one of these, but not knowing when it's going to start snowing, as long as it's something that we can adjust on the fly. And I agree with, I agree with the points that were made. That's probably the way that I would lean, knowing that we can still adjust that, and if something isn't being used, I mean, if the third, if the third deck of the parking garage doesn't get used, whether it's weekend or weekday, I don't see any reason to plow it either. I'm just stating from, if we're able to do this as we move forward, hopefully that would take care of itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Swanson, then Bruno, then McGowan?
Okay, thank you. I guess I wanted to clarify, I didn't look at this as taking away public parking from the downtown or from the businesses, but I did look at it from the commuter lot, particularly the lot at 31, on the south side of the tracks, it kind of extends for 40 acres. That seems like that could be easily blocked off and save an hour there, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you.
The overflow lot there?
Just the lot south of the train tracks.
Yeah, the overflow, yeah, okay, got it. Alderman Bruno, then McGowan?
Yeah, I would also be happy to entertain any discussion of this type of cost savings or anything else. I suppose if we're dealing with pandemic and shutdown, that conversation should probably happen sooner than later. But, yeah, I'm fine with the contract and would look forward to discussing it. Thanks.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what other towns are doing, if other towns in the area are similarly adjusting their public parking lots and how they're being plowed for this winter. But I'd also like to know what the cost will be in regard to staff time for blocking off certain portions of parking lots. Is the police department going to be expected to do that, or would city streets, you know, Public Works employees be responsible for that? How would the public be informed of the parking lot closures? What type of enforcement measures would be needed for any, someone who decides to park in a closed-off portion anyway, like maybe the day before a snowstorm, and then their car ends up being there in the snow, all of those things? So I feel that there may be some additional costs involved, so I'd obviously like to know what that would look like as well. And if there is an average of six snow events of two inches or more where the lots have to be plowed, and it's a five-hour snow plow duration, 84, 15-hour, it comes to 2,500, yes, that would be a great savings to, let's say, I don't know, if we take out one of those parking lots, what would we be actually saving? Maybe $800? That's assuming we get all six snow events. So I think this is a really good, in principle, I agree with this, but I don't think it's really going to be saving that much money if you do factor in additional costs of staff time and resources. But I'm not opposed to getting more information about it, and finding out what other local areas are doing, like, what is Wheaton doing, what is Naperville doing, and so on and so forth. St. Charles, Batavia. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra, and then Alderman Kossarog. Alderman Ruby, do you wish to speak at all? Just so you don't forget about, okay.
Okay, so for me, I think it's a great idea, but the one thing that we need to check on is what are people hearing about return to office plans? I know that we used to attend meetings regularly where the whole RTO thing was a constant topic in the county, in the city, where I work. Right now, we're looking at going back in January. January is still the middle of snow season, so if return to office starts to come about in the winter, I think it would be a good idea to have lots cleared for people to use. However, if that gets pushed out, I agree, why are we clearing things that aren't going to be used? So I think we need to check and see what we're hearing regionally about what these RTO plans are before we did anything definitive.
Alderman Kossarog?
Same question, I have a couple of questions, but is the 84.50 consistent with what it was last year?
It's actually an increase from last year. Last year's price was $75 an hour.
Okay. Is there, did we question that from a staff point of view or anything like that?
Yes.
Or justification for the increase?
Just what you guys have just talked about, increases in benefit costs and equipment costs and fuel costs are fairly stable now, but yes, it's just increase of cost.
What was it, I'm sorry, last year?
Increase of cost.
No, what was the rate last year?
Last year was $75.
Seventy-five. And then, this is probably something I just don't know from history, but why are our own streets, and I don't mean this in a critical way, but I'm just curious why we don't use our own employees to clear the lots instead of hiring it out?
Well, part of it has to do with the timing of being able to clear the commuter lots. We just don't have the personnel to be able to pull them off of the street, put them in the lots to spend five hours clearing the lot. If I got to take them off, if there's five hours, they're not on the road, clearing the roads to get to the lots. That's the main thing right there.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to say, sort of as my last on the policy, that I would be open to talking about maybe closing or downsizing some of the lots, but I would want to make sure that the perception was Geneva's open for business and continues to be open for business. So I don't want people to come into town and see yellow barricades on our commuter lot, things like that. I just really want to make sure we support the town and we support our businesses. And so to me, that means there's a perception there that we're not, the pandemic's here and we're shutting the city down, and so don't bother coming to Geneva. So that's just my feedback from that part of the discussion. Maybe some that are around playgrounds and things like that, maybe those could be downsized, but anything that involved our downtown business district, I think would be important to keep open, or at least have the perception of, whether it was the last deck of the parking garage, probably wouldn't be a big deal, or the back recess of the commuter lot. But anyway, I just wanted to put that in there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Gentlemen, are you comfortable, and I'm going to take a lead here from Alderman Caven, that if we advance this, we can advance it with respect to consideration moving forward prior to snow seizing hitting? So we have ample time to discuss a strategy with regard to rollout? Is it your recommendation that we advance this now, or do you want to postpone it to have further discussion internally about what can and can't be done in terms of resources through this contractor? My gut tells me we advance it, and you guys can discuss, and we all can continue to discuss certain areas, what have you, that might not be germane, and then we just shave off that contract accordingly.
And we'll make sure prior to the city council meeting that we know what the terms of the contract are to ensure that if we shore it down, that that doesn't affect the rate.
Okay.
We could address it through a future change order if necessary.
Okay.
The contractors amicable to that.
Sure. Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. With that, in that regard, Alderman McGowan?
Mayor, so would it be appropriate to notify the Chamber of Commerce just to let them know that we're having this discussion and maybe find out from their members? They could find out from their members if they would be in support, because I'd like to get that feedback from the business owners, as in regard to partial closures of certain public lots, or even full closures of certain public parking areas.
I think it's fair, we can certainly have Kathleen reach out. Alderman Caven?
I don't think we need to take anything to the chamber right now. I don't want anything closed that would have any type of negative impact on any one single business in this downtown. I think we're talking more about something that maybe is not utilized at all. In my personal opinion, I don't think that we need to send anything to the chamber that makes them think that we're even contemplating something like this, because if there was any shot that this is going to impact any business in this town, there's no way I would look at any of that, for me personally. So, I mean, if we want to start, I don't think it's time to send out, send out flares like this is something that could potentially be a problem, in my opinion, because I don't think there's anybody in this council that would look to save $1,000 if they thought it was going to have a negative impact on the business. So that's my personal thought, but I'm willing to entertain the discussion. If there's a lot that nobody parks in for two months at a time, well, that's different than indicating to somebody who belongs to the Chamber of Commerce or a downtown or a business someplace that their parking may be reduced. I don't think that that's, if that's anything that I sort of construed, I just want to make sure that that's not, that's not it at all for me personally, and I would assume that the majority of people on this council would certainly echo similar thoughts.
Director Timoshenko is a member of the Board of Directors, and of course, she would relay any and all information prior to any decision being made. Yeah, I mean, but with respect to the change order, everyone else is comfortable in that regard, if necessary? With that, roll call vote?
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Item 4F passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 4G considers draft ordinance amending Title 13 Flood Control, Chapter 1 Flood Hazard Area Development, and Chapter 2 Stormwater Management of the Geneva City Code.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
Midwest Industrial Funds is proposing to dedicate a public utility easement within their property to provide a route that will eventually incorporate the City of Geneva water, fiber, and electrical utilities that will serve the Southeast Master Plan SAMP development area. This supports the prioritized strategic plan objective of developing a resilient local economy through the development of new commercial and industrial opportunities that add to the city's tax base. Two specific action items in the city's strategic plan relate to the SAMP. We have Director Babica with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Questions or comments for Ms. Dawkins or Director Babica? Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, item 4G considers draft ordinance amending Title 13 Flood Control, Chapter 1 Flood Hazard Area Development, and Chapter 2 Stormwater Management of the Geneva City Code.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the City of Geneva adopted the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance by reference for stormwater and flood control. Recently, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources notified staff that there was a discrepancy in the city code. The ordinance for your consideration this evening addresses this discrepancy and will reduce confusion with the ordinance's implementation. This item supports the strategic plan goal of implementing initiatives to protect the Fox River and preserve groundwater resources. Again, this is essentially a housekeeping order because we had a conflict between the ordinance we adopted by reference, which is the county ordinance, and our own ordinance. Director Babica is here this evening if you have any other questions.
Questions or comments for Director Babica? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, item 4G passes. Item 4H considers draft resolution granting a request for connection to the municipal water supply without annexation for the property located at 1721 Western Avenue. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Burghart and seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the property owners at 1721 Western Avenue submitted a request to connect to the city's municipal water service without annexation. The connection would be at the sole expense of the property owner, who would be required to comply with all applicable provisions of the Geneva City Code. City Council approval is required to be able to connect absent annexation. Please note, the property's owner name is misspelled in the resolution, but that will be corrected before you see the resolution at the next meeting, should this be continued to that meeting. Director Babica is here if you have any questions on this item.
Questions or comments for either Ms. Dawkins or Director Babica? Hearing none, Alderman Kilburg?
How many residents, how many property lots do we have on Western Avenue that are currently on their own well? And have we, have we had any discussion with those residents about possibly, is there any efficiencies as it relates to possibly doing more of those properties at the same time? In other words, would there be any savings to the resident if, in fact, they'd give consideration to doing the same with their property? How many residents do we have over there that are still on their own well?
Well, technically, none. The residents, the people that live on that segment of Western Avenue are outside the corporate limits of the City of Geneva.
Okay, understood, but how many, how many of those properties, because they probably consider themselves residents of Geneva if they're on Western Avenue?
I would have to, off the top of my head, I would be in a corporate meeting for to give you...
Yeah, there's, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably somewhere between six and 10.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing.
Between that and Considine, there's...
Yeah.
Is this a new homeowner that's coming in that wants this, or is this an existing resident that's decided they're going to give up their well?
Well, it's, again, I'm going to be clear about this, is that it's, they're outside the corporate limits, so they're not a resident, and it's my understanding that their well has developed issues, and for water quality reasons, they're seeking to connect to the city's water utility. And the city has been generous with extending our utilities to
I think if you read in the packet on page 36 was the request from the homeowner, which stated that they are on a shared well with their neighbors, and ownership and maintenance for the well has become increasingly complicated, so that's why they want to connect to the city water.
That's why, that's why I'm asking if, if in fact we've had communication with, with those other residents there that, if you've got one property owner that's having a contamination issue with their well, maybe we ought to alert the other residents that as a courtesy, and this is something that they may want to look at. That's all I'm saying, is I think if I, I had my own well and I had a resident in the vicinity that was having a contamination issue, or a question as, as, as it relates to water quality, I would think that I'd like to find that out.
So to clarify, they did not say that they were having water quality issues? They said they were having issues with a shared well with their neighbor.
Okay, so it's-
Secondly, I would also say this is more of a policy discussion, whether the council wants to continue to allow homes that are not in the city limits to connect to the city's water service. They pay no more than the resident pays, and there's no other benefit to the city for that. So I think that's a broader discussion, whether you want to continue to do these without annexation, or whether you want to look at annexing all those properties, because they are eligible for annexation because they are surrounded by city property on all sides.
Alderman Kilburg, so is the floor. Anything else?
So, is, is it reasonable to, is this something that they're anticipating wanting to do this fall yet?
That is my understanding, yes.
That's all I have.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I missed something. I thought there was, I thought they paid a higher rate when they connected.
So originally in our ordinance, we had that they paid one and a half times until we were informed by our city attorney that that was not legal.
Lawyers.
Because basically, you have to justify what that extra, what that extra payment is for, and if the infrastructure's already there and the, and the city is already maintaining that line, there's no additional cost to the city, because they're just connecting their own private service line, which is on them.
Got it, thanks.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Ruby? Roll call vote, please. Oh, Alderman Casarog?
What are the pros and cons of annexing the property rather than without annexation?
The city would receive the property tax dollars, and then those property owners would receive trash service, brush pickup, all of the municipal water, all of the city services, so.
Does the homeowner then have to agree to that, then as part of the hookup?
So there's, there's two ways. There's forced annexation, which the homeowner does not have to agree to, or there's voluntary annexation.
Have we tried the volunteer with these residents?
We have not, but again, I think this is a broader discussion, probably.
Long time ago, we have, but of course that changes depending on homeowners. The last major parcel that has been developed for residential property that all of you know about is the development on Western Avenue. That was for virtually time immemorial unincorporated land. And when that developer came in, they said, we want to annex, so obviously it made it easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a lot of folks, if you talk to folks who are unincorporated, they enjoy the autonomy of not having to, quote, deal with the city on a number of things. They regulate their own garbage refuse pickup, they regulate their own leaves, they, all that stuff.
It may be a broader issue, but I just sort of feel like, is there a downside to asking them if they allow to be annexed voluntarily as part of this, or is this just a bigger issue that we need to get into?
No, you're, you're, I mean, again, that's why it comes to the city council, so if the city council desires that they would like to ask for annexation prior to granting this request, the city council absolutely has that authority.
On practical terms, it would be led by the representatives of that area, of course, to make such an overture. At least I would think.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to ask exactly what Stephanie just said. Would it be appropriate to make an amendment to this, to ask the resident for annexation, for voluntary annexation in order to connect to our water? Or would you recommend, otherwise I would be a no vote?
Well, I, I think, I don't know necessarily that we need an amendment. I think the council could opt to not have this go forward to the next council meeting, but go to the next COW, and in the meantime, if, if council, if there's consensus and agreement that you want us to approach the homeowners for annexation, we can do so. But I would, I guess we would need at least a show of hands, or?
Well, I'd ask this question. We have had multiple requests that have been approved by this council to connect to unincorporated properties. Would it be the desire of this council then to return to those properties that remain unincorporated and ask for voluntary annexation, or would just start now? That's my only concern. We have properties that we approved six months ago on the north of our borders with St. Charles. Those new homes are connected to Geneva Water. Those are not in the City of Geneva. They are paying no higher a fee than the other homes in Geneva. Do we go back to that development?
Are those in St. Charles, though?
I think you're referring to the ones off of-
Route 31?
Route 31, yeah, that's, that's an intergovernmental agreement.
The IJ, okay.
I will say that I started a project, gosh, I don't know, six or eight months ago, trying to identify those properties that either are wholly surrounded by the city and are still unincorporated, and those properties that receive certain city services and are unincorporated. And the plan was to come to a policy discussion with the council to identify those properties and talk, and talk about this, and that's why I said it's a bigger picture. Unfortunately, obviously, things have kind of waylaid that, that project, but I, GIS did create a map for me, so I know how many properties we're talking about that either get city services and are not incorporated, or maybe they don't get city services, but they're fully surrounded by the city. So trying to kind of clear up some of those donut holes or, or gaps.
Alderman Burghart?
Yeah, I think we're asking great questions, and I think this is the kind of stuff we have to continue to talk about. I'm in favor of approving this for this homeowner tonight, because I feel like to not do so would be kind of changing the rules in the middle of the game. We have approved these sort of things since I've been on the council regularly, and, you know, I read her email, and it's very casual, and, you know, kind of, thanks, I want to stay on my sewer, but I want to do this. You know, I just think to go to the homeowner and say, hey, you want to part of the City of Geneva, it feels like a little, I don't know, could be a little threatening, or a little, you know, kind of, again, changing the rules in the middle of the game, and I think talk of annexation is a big deal, and I don't know that we want to do it kind of on the fly on a Tuesday night, and, you know, I think there'd be some pushback and some bad PR from, if it starts getting out that we're trying to, we're looking into snatching up properties. So tonight, I, I hope we go ahead and approve this and have this important discussion at a time when we're all ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For a second time, before I recognize Alderman Casarog, anyone else wishes to speak, who has not yet done so?
So, based on your experience, is it when you approach people for a voluntary annexation, do they take it more as a land grab, as Alderman Burghart is saying?
No.
They just don't want to do it. I mean-
It's, because it's voluntary, it's up to the homeowner. I mean, no, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, but I understand what you're saying.
I guess when she has a pending-
Exactly.
She has a pending request to get-
Exactly.
And then we say, hey-
And it doesn't preclude us from asking in the future.
Right.
Yes, exactly. I just think if I were in this homeowner's shoes, I'd think, well, what if I say no? Does that mean I don't get what I've already been, you know, working on? I, again, valuable discussion, I just don't know if this is the, if this is, we put the stake in the ground tonight when we're, you know, all have a lot of questions and probably need to think about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg?
Will they be billed in also for water and sewer, or just water?
Just water.
Because they won't be connected to the city's city-
I understand that, but.
They'll be required to have a meter installed. They'll, they'll be required to adhere to all city codes and regularity to the water system. They'll have to have the inspections, they'll have to have the meter installed, and then the finance department will be able to set up an account with them to charge them just for the water portion of their bill.
I do just have one more quick question. How much does that cost, just in general, for the resident, just a ballpark? $50,000, $75,000, $25,000 for a resident to hook up to our water?
This one, actually, they're fairly lucky, because the water main literally runs through their front yard, so it'll be a tap into their system, the installation of the buffalo box to shut off, the penetration into their foundation, the installation through that, the installation of the water meter in a chamber. I, without being able to give you an accurate estimate, the best reference I could pull back to is the recently adopted Lead Service Replacement Program, where we kept their costs at $5,000, which covers the vast majority of service line replacements. I would say that would be a fairly accurate ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. A question for Director Babica. Do you, do you know ballpark amount, what, I don't know if there even is such a number, but I'm curious what the average resident pays in taxes that goes toward the water utility. In a sense, what I'm asking is, what, what would somebody who isn't annexed be not liable for financially? What kind of dollar amount are we talking about?
So it, I'll, I'll take that question, because it depends. There are things on an unincorporated tax bill that would go away when you add on the city's tax. So as you know, the city's percentage of, of a property is roughly six and a half cents, six, six and a half percent. So that's what they're not paying, but currently they're paying township, and there's two things, and I don't have the bill in front of me, but there's two things that they don't pay that then they would pay for the city. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a variable cost, but as far as the water utility goes, that's an enterprise fund, so that's solely supported by user fees. Property taxes have nothing to do with our water utility. So I don't know if that helped or confused it more.
Okay, so if this homeowner were to annex, they would have to get all city services? They couldn't just selectively opt to only get city water?
No, they could get city water until such time as their septic fails, at which time they would be required to connect to the city's sanitary sewer. As far as the electric goes, residential can stay on comm ed as long as they want. Commercials have to, commercial properties have to convert within two years.
Okay, so if, in this particular instance, if this homeowner annexed or unannexed, would they be paying any different amount for their water bill? I mean, I know we have to charge them the same-
We have to charge them the same as we charge anybody else. Correct.
But if they were, if they were annexed, would there be any additional fees that the city would receive from this particular property address?
Yes. If they were annexed, we would, we would, again, like I said, we would get the, the property tax that we do not currently get. So-
Okay, but the property tax just goes to the city, not to the water utility?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So just, I, I was able to pull up a, an unincorporated tax bill. They currently would pay the Geneva Township Fire Special District rate and the Geneva Township Ambulance Special District rate. Our fire department is paid through, through our property tax. So those two line items go away, and instead you get the one city line item. So it's, you know, when we did some, some estimates before, it's, it's, it's not a huge difference in cost, quite frankly, but again, it comes with the idea of whether or not you want to be controlled by city code, or whether you want to follow the county's code.
I think we're linking two dissimilar topics here, and I'd like to call the question on just the water for this house, if I could.
Question has been called. Roll call vote.
McGowan?
No second needed.
Aye. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
On item H, 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero absent. Item-
Thank you.
Aye, thank you, Director Babica. Presentation and consideration of draft resolution authorizing repayment plan for past due utility balances, and the resumption of disconnections and late payment penalties effective October 22 of 2020. We have with us our Finance Director, Rita Cruz, and consideration, so we'll, we'll take the motion after the presentation.
Okay, so I was going to give a brief summary.
Yes, please do.
Actually, it's very brief, because as the mayor indicated, we have Finance Director Cruz, and she's prepared a presentation regarding this item. So the resolution under consideration this evening would authorize the repayment plan for past due utility balances, and the resumption of disconnection and late payment penalties, as the mayor indicated. I would also kind of let Rita go through her presentation, certainly the, any questions you have. At the end, we have representatives from both water utility, Bob Van Gescam, and the electric utility, Aaron Holton, I think, but I can't see him, and then Director Babica. So we'll let Rita kind of go through her presentation, and then certainly she'll be available for any questions.
After your presentation, Director Cruz, we will entertain the motion to advance the recommendations therein. Thank you.
Okay. Want to make sure this works. Still getting used to this online thing. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about the City of Geneva utilities during COVID. I first wanted to talk about the history with utilities in relation to COVID. On March 15th, the City of Geneva declared a formal declaration of emergency. On March 14th, cycle two penalties were not assessed and disconnections were suspended. From March 15th to today, we have sent no late notices and no actions have been taken to collect Lincoln accounts. But in July 15th through December 14th of 2020, we did suspend the 5% utility tax. So to talk about what the effects are on, of COVID on utilities, I'm first going to talk about last fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, which was done on 4/30/2020. For the electric utility, they had billed about 30, 3.95% decrease in consumption. So in fiscal year 19, they billed 385 million megawatt hours, and in 2020, it was 397 milliwatt, or megawatt hours, I'm sorry. Penalties were down from last year, because those last two and a half months or so, we did not charge penalties. So that saw a decrease of $80,700 from our, from the budget. And also, disconnection fees were down. The budget was $30,000, and we, actual was $28,610. Now, if you look at the end of the year numbers for the city, you see that, I present on the far right, the budget for revenues and expenditures versus the actual. These are unaudited numbers today. That presentation will happen next month for the audit, but they are numbers that will not change at this point. So actual was 36 million, which is a difference of 6.2, about $6.3 million in revenues, and the expenses were 60, 36.9 million, which is a difference of about 5.4 million. So the net decrease was $897,000. Now, all the enterprise funds do not look at a fund balance as a percentage to see if they're in compliance. We actually look at cash and investments. So on the bottom right, I was comparing the cash and investments from the end of fiscal year 19 to the end of fiscal year 20. So as you can see, there's a 12-point, 1% decrease in cash from 14 point, or sorry, 10.5 million to 9.2 million. So next, looking at the water and wastewater utility for the fiscal year 20, you can see that billed consumption was down as well for them, about 97 million cubic feet versus 93 million cubic feet, which is about a 4.25% decrease in consumption. Penalties down as well, because we did suspend those, and about $11,800. When you look to the far right, you can see the budget versus actual. Their actual was down about $1 million, but they did save on the expense side by looking at, especially their capital items. So did save about 3.3 million, with a net of about 1.45 million. Again, this is an enterprise fund, so we do look at cash and investments. In 2019, their ending cash balance was 5.2 million, and in 2020, their cash and investments balance was 4.3 million, which is about a 21% decrease in cash. Next, I want to jump into this fiscal year. The first four months at this point, you know, about third of the year, so we can kind of see what's really going on. So for the electric side, you can see that they also have had a decrease in megawatt hours billed. That decrease is about 1.9% from last year to this fiscal year. When you look at penalties, because we have not charged penalties, I took a five-year average of what we had billed in the past for the first four months of this, of the same fiscal year, from May through August, and that's about $93,000. When you look at the connection fees, that's also about $10,300. So on the water side, consumption's up. We know it's I mean, my burnt grass proves it. So you can see that consumption is definitely up. It's up almost 4% compared to last year for the first four months of the fiscal year. And again, penalties that have been missed are about $24,400. So next, I want to talk about cash and receivables. These are related because your receivables will go down as your cash typically goes up because you're paying your receivables down. So I started off in February, which was, you know, half year really for COVID, or half month I should say for COVID. So you can see that the, this is for electric only in millions. You can see that they're pretty consistent about 9.4, down a little bit. See the drop in May? Now, the drop in May is because their debt service is due on May 1. So that is typical through any single year that we see in their financials, and as you can see, it comes back up again because that's a one-time payment, well, a two-time payment, but that first one is in May. So you can see here that it's kind of taken a dip, but it's come back up. On the receivable side, it began at 1.6, it's now about 2.1. We had the high in July, but it's slightly come down again a little bit. So it's doing okay, but you can still definitely see that there's an increase. And these numbers are based upon the last day of that month. I do have a spreadsheet that I pass around the heads every single day, but that is very complicated and it's very, very busy. So now looking at water wastewater, once again, in millions. You'll see that in February for water, you saw about $4.7 million in cash. It kind of goes up and then it slightly dips back down again. And with the receivables, you see them at half a million starting, and now we're at about three quarters of a billion dollars. So we are seeing an uptick as well in cash and receivables. So next, I want to focus on the arrears balance because we do have a lot of people that are paying on time. So I want to focus in on the people that have not been paying and have been struggling to pay. So this chart shows the, both a water and electric balances and including active and inactive accounts. So an inactive account is an account that the person's moved out, they have left the city. Unfortunately, I cannot separate it out for every single month, so we're seeing totals here. You see the large increase in April and May, and part of that reason is, is that we had a top 10 rate payer have become two months behind in their utility bills. So you do see the large upswing, then it starts coming back down, but it is slowly creeping up again as we speak. So I also wanted to give you a snapshot of what it looks like at the end of August. Mind you, every single day, the receivable and the cash balance changes. You know, we're receiving payments in, we're billing people, so this is a constant, you know, moving target, so I wanted to pick a month, you know, pick the end of the month to look at that. So the snapshot for August, at the end of August, I should say, we had a total of 652 accounts in arrears at a value of $334,000. Compared to last year, you saw 174 accounts at about $84,800 in 2019. So I wanted to dig into the details and see what the top 20 active delinquent accounts look like. So people that are not finaled out and have not left the city, but people that are currently here and they are still here. On that top 20, the top 20 actually represent 50% of the total arrears balance that is active. So in the total balance of 334,000, you have 211,700, that's for active, and you have 122,500 that's inactive. You have 14 commercial accounts, and you actually have six residential's. And 14 of them are rentals, and they are actually not all the commercials. So there are some rental residential's in this list. And I also looked at how many of the payments have been made. So 18 or 90% of the accounts have made zero or one payment since the end of mid, since mid-February. If the payment was made, it was pretty much late February, early March. So you're really seeing that they made that payment right after COVID began, and then they have stopped paying from then on out. So looking forward, you know, we need to look at the viability of the two funds to make sure that they are staying in compliance with a bunch of different items and so we can move ahead. So like I said, we need to keep, we need to be financially stable because there is an unknown future, as you talked about earlier. We don't know what COVID's going to look like in the future, in the next six months to a year. We also need to stay in compliance with our bond covenants. Our bond covenants are 1.25%, sorry, the operating income is 1.25% of the bond payments. So that we also have to make sure we are in compliance with as well. Maintain that cash balance policy I talked about earlier. The city's cash balance policy is 25%. They are both currently within that policy, but, you know, once again, if the cash keeps on going down, receivables keep coming up, we could threaten to get there and actually not make that policy. But we also want to assist customers which need assistance through this crisis as well. The board here tonight has a fiduciary responsibility to the ratepayers to ensure that the fund is fully funded and it is moving ahead and we are able to make our payments, you know, make sure that capital is being funded and make sure everything is okay. Enterprise funds stand on their own. Remember, they are only funded by user fees and that is it. So there's no, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, there's no property taxes or anything like that coming into this fund. It is truly by user fees only. So staff has come up with a recommendation to move forward. We are looking to offer a six-month payment plan, which would be one-sixth of the balance as of October 21st, with the first payment due November 1st of 2020. So I've looked at the average residential customer in arrears as of that August 31st date. It's about $345, so I divide that out by six. You get rounded 57.50. So that's what the customer would pay for those six months throughout. They must go online, create, or actually initiate a payment, the payment plan on an online form, which would tell us, as the finance department, that we're ready to go to start that payment plan. They must stay current with their utility bills as well as of October 22nd, 2020. If they do not make payments on this payment plan, they are subject to disconnection. And beginning October 22nd, the bills, those bills would be assessed penalties and termination for non-payment. So what does that look like in a calendar to see dates? So if this is, if this comes, goes past through the cow tonight, it would be subject to approval at the council on September 21st. September 23rd, finance would send out letters to the delinquent account holders and copies to the landlords as well. We would publish an FAQ on the city's website and activate that online payment plan form for people to go online, sign up for their payment plan, and then we can process that at a later date. Their deadline for that payment plan is October 11th of 2020, to make sure that staff has time to process all those payment plans and get those first set of bills for the payment plans out to all those customers. October 22nd would be the first utility bill issued within the cycle, which the payment, sorry, the penalties would apply. November 1st would be that first payment plan that was due. December 16th would be the potential first disconnect date because disconnection can be up to 50 days past the bill date. The final payment due for the payment plan would be April 1st of 2020, and the last day of fiscal year is April 30th of 2021. We're asking for a six-month plan to consider it today because we do not want this to go past our current fiscal year, so we are trying to make sure we get this done and we can move ahead and at least we can start fresh in 2022.
So I just, is that it?
Yes, it's.
Sorry. I wanted to make a couple clarifications or just to make sure you understand what the proposition is. One of our concerns is that people are, have kind of dug themselves into a hole, and if we don't, if we don't at some point stop what we're doing, that hole will just get deeper and deeper. So this idea is actually taking that amount that's due in arrears and taking it outside of utility billing and moving it into miscellaneous billing. So what that means is, for the future, all of their utility bills will just be their current charges. So you're not overwhelmed every month when you get your utility bill, oh my gosh, I owe $300 and now I owe another $50 for this month, and it just, psychologically, I think, I think it has an impact. So the utility bills, starting with this proposal with October 22nd, would be solely for those current charges. If they sign up for the repayment plan, all of the charges that are in arrears get moved out and are dealt with separately and by themselves. So we're not, we're not assessing penalties on that past due amount. The penalties only get assessed if you don't stay current with the new charges. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood how that works because I know it's a little bit complicated, but again, it's trying to separate the two. So then what would happen is if you don't pay that penalty, that the payment plan, that amount could go to collections after the six months. So again, that's a, that's an amount that the utility would then write off, send to collections, and we hope that we would collect, but it doesn't impact, again, people's current usage. So we're trying to be as fair and equitable as we can be, but yet we still have to operate the utility and make sure that the utility stays viable and able to service all the customers. So I just wanted to make sure that that, everybody understood kind of what we're proposing. And that's why, there is nothing that precludes you from paying your balance in full tomorrow. That you can do that at any time, and we encourage that. But that is one of the reasons we're asking people to affirmatively opt into the program because it is a lot of work to create those bills and move them out of the one system into the other system and set up the payment plan. So we really only want to be doing that for those individuals who are willing to participate in that, in that process. So with that though, Chair, we'll leave it up to you for questions.
Is anyone uncomfortable with, I was just going to say, is anyone uncomfortable of making a motion to advance this as presented? Alderman Swanson makes the motion, is there a second?
No, I'm uncomfortable.
Okay, got it.
I have a question.
Okay. It's going to be a hell of a night. Yes, yes, that was. So let's have that discussion.
No, I'm sorry. We don't, we don't need a, don't we need a motion to discuss?
That's what I just asked. Because I want to make certain that everyone's clear on what we're advancing. What we're advancing, if there's a motion, is exactly what's been recommended. So are there questions prior, that we still have in our heads to understand what's being recommended prior to the motion?
I'm sorry. Point of order, do we ever do that? I don't feel, I feel like we always have a motion before we start the discussion.
We have done that in the past, but if you prefer the otherwise, then I'll entertain a motion and so advance. Go for it.
I guess I just want to be clear, like inconsistent. Like I don't remember ever having a spirited discussion without a motion.
We have multiple times, but I'll look it up exactly what those were, but it's up to you guys. I understand what's being recommended here. I have a couple of questions that I think would be benefit everyone in terms of clarification, but if you want to make the motion, no problem.
But how would that play out if we don't have a motion and we all ask our questions?
My question was this, is anyone uncomfortable making the motion? Alderman Swanson, yes, I am. My assumption is that you still have questions to clarify.
I'm uncomfortable with some of the details. I'm fine moving it forward. How's that?
Got it.
Now I'll make the motion.
Motion by Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burghardt. Burghardt, the floor is yours still, if you'd like.
I'm good. That's all I wanted, thanks.
I have a comment to make. The word arrears has some negative connotations. The reality is though, and you and I have had this discussion, as have Stephanie and I, there are some homeowners and there are some commercial users who have deliberately, to their credit and creativity, said, if I'm not being penalized for not paying now, I'm not going to pay. So it's not as if they're violating anything. They've benefited from the program that's in place. And by segregating what's owed and what's current is our way of contributing to the, or making less painful moving forward. Okay. Because there are multiple, multiple people, businesses and homeowners who have, for whatever it's worth, said, oh, hell, no penalties, I'm not paying. That's up to them. But that's taken a toll on the utility. So that's all. With that, questions or comments for the Director and/or the Director Babica or superintendents? Mr. Swanson.
I'll start. I guess the first supposition of this plan is that COVID has ended and everyone is back to where they were, and I'm not quite sure we're at that spot. So we have 14 businesses of the top 20 that are in arrears or haven't paid since February, or the vast majority of them. I'm guessing they can't as opposed to they deemed they're just not going to. So why, all of a sudden, by us setting a date, do we feel, you know what, the cash is there, let's start paying? So that's, isn't even feasible for some of these companies. Number two, we have a December 16th utility shut-off date, which I think is just outrageously insulting to people with respect to winter. Some people have boilers or electric heater. To shut off your heat in the middle of winter, I think is just Mortimer Scrooge. And in a pandemic, I can't see doing that. And number three, we're giving them six months to pay something they haven't been able to pay because of the pandemic. That seems a stretch. Granted, they've been in business and incurring expenses and the other taxpayers are bearing the brunt of that, I understand that. However, perhaps six months is too accelerated a timeframe. We're trying to jam this through by our fiscal year end. I'm not so certain that that's appropriate in this case. So I would see, number one, extending it. Number two, how feasible it is for these 20 customers, which is the vast majority. And then number three, I'd love to see how much of this is inactive customers, because I'm guessing the inactive customers is going to collection right away, or should be. Some businesses have closed. I'm assuming they owed us utility bills. We're not going to see that. They're not going to participate in this plan. So I guess all of those questions make me very uncomfortable presenting this to our people that are in need right now.
If I may though, so it's not a supposition that we think COVID has done. What it is, it's looking at the business plan of the utilities and saying, how long can we continue in this manner by not collecting? By not, by not, at least, I think, and the mayor indicated, there are those who can't pay and those who are choosing not to pay. So the idea is, those who are choosing not to pay should start paying. And how do you distinguish, you don't know, but certainly if we can start a conversation with utility customers and if we put a plan in place and I say, hey, this is great, but I still can't make this plan, that would allow us to start that conversation with those individuals. The second thing, disconnection, just because we say disconnections can resume in December, doesn't mean disconnections happen in December. We still have to follow our code. Our code says we do not disconnect when the weather is a certain temperature or forecasted to be a certain temperature. So there are certain requirements that still have to meet. What it means is that we just go back to what the city code says. We have kind of put that on hold since March, and so now we would just resume what the code says.
I received a disconnect order once in January of 2015 because I hadn't swapped out my meter.
Doesn't mean you won't receive the disconnection order. Because what we're going to send.
It scared the heck out of me, so.
Well, and that's why we send it. Because we're going to send the order because we also have those individuals, I hate to say, that know that we do not disconnect on certain dates, and so they purposely play that game.
I wasn't playing any game, but the timing was terrible, and if you're relying on utilities for heat, I think I would take a closer look at that.
Well, that, again, is, the city code is what the council adopts, so if you want changes to that, we can look at that. The six months is a stretch. We had to pick a number that seemed reasonable, and it seemed reasonable. Again, the council can make any recommendations they care to make there. But I think the idea is, is you'll see that our neighboring communities have already gone back to their regular procedures. The ICC has issued, they've had moratoriums, but they've also said they're going to go back to starting regular procedures because at some point, we still have a utility to run and we still have a responsibility to that utility.
Floor is still yours.
I understand that, and I would like to remove the disconnect in December, move that into spring, and I would like to extend the payment periods beyond six months that I think would be a little more manageable for some of our businesses or residences who are in need right now. So that would be my recommendations.
Do you have a specific timeframe in mind?
I would prefer to see 12 months and no utility shut-offs until April.
Alderman Marps.
I'm not just playing, I'm just clarifying. Do we have late fees then? Do we?
Do we have late fees that we charge? We would still pay, we would still charge late fees, correct?
Sorry, the penalties would be the late fees.
So we would still be charging those on the current bills? Is that what you're saying, Alderman Swanson? Or, I guess I'm trying to clarify what you, I understand you want to go out 12 months, but if we start the billing on October, you know, on October, would we, would we be charging penalties then for those people who are not making those payments?
I think, yes, we have to. At some point, we have to stop allowing everyone to continue on without opting in, if you will, into a payment plan. I'm trying to make it a little more agreeable for someone to opt in, but I fully understand we can't continue to provide free utilities for anyone and everyone just because of a pandemic. So I guess we'd have to work out the details of that.
And that's why, I was just trying to, Rita, or Stephanie, what is our current policy if we just know, if someone comes in and says, I'm just unemployed? How do we handle those? And I know we're going back to that, that's why I guess I'm asking.
So what we do is we actually refer them to LIHEP and Salvation Army and some other type of.
Can you summarize what LIHEP is? I think most of us know, but.
Okay.
Low Income Heating Assistance Program.
Yeah. LIHEP is a, is a heating assistance program. They fill out an application, they send it to LIHEP. LIHEP makes the decision if they. And then they are required to pay whatever that balance should be. Salvation Army, Hesit House, they all do that same type of process, so the city doesn't do any of that, we just, you know, receive the money. And then typically, we will give people extensions, three months or, or so, typically not past that, because we do understand that we need to collect the money and make sure they don't fall further into arrears. So this is a tad bit outside of our, our norm. We've not seen a lot of people apply for LIHEP, but I honestly don't know if that money has dried up. You know, so much more need, I just don't know that. But we've not, not seen as many as we used to.
But do we charge those people penalties then if they don't keep up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That, that's, I was just trying to.
And, and the, the city code provides for a waiver of two penalties in a calendar year. Additional penalties can be waived with extension circumstances with my authorization.
Okay. That was my next question. Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rita. Boy, this is, this is challenging, this really tugs at the, the empathy cords. Going back, you're saying right now, we're still in compliance with our reserves in these funds?
Yes.
How mu, and you said, how much longer before we'd probably be out of compliance with reserves?
Um, I don't know. It just, you know, it depends. So, as of right now, electrics at 30% and actually water's at 103%. So they're very high, but.
That's also delaying capital projects and all of that.
Yes. Yeah. That is looking at the reduction of what we would have typically spent.
And, so, so this is proposed tied into putting a bow on everything before the next fiscal year. So what's, tell me the complications. What, what happens? What would be the burden on the city to roll this over, to extend this into the next fiscal year?
There wouldn't be any burden, it was just, since we typically do three months, doubling it to six would be, I thought would be equitable. We can go past that, you'll just see that you look at the financials, if you would compare last year to this year, you would see the receivables higher or lower depending upon.
So in your budget presentation, you would have to explain why those numbers are such the next time?
Exactly.
And the auditors would likely want an explanation.
Yeah, they're gonna want, yeah, just like they do today.
And, and we'd have an explanation.
Yeah.
I fully appreciate funding this, or funding the utilities. I'm a little uncomfortable with the timeline, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't tie this to the COVID phase before it starts to kick in. I'm just thinking out loud, I would at least, I don't know, I, I think it's, it starts too soon and it's too short a timeline, I'd be, I'd be, I think I'd be too uncomfortable with this timeline right now. Thanks.
Before I recognize Alderman McGowan, I want the council to under, or the committee, excuse me, to understand that multiple conversations took place prior to us being here tonight regarding this, the uneasiness of this discussion, no question about it. I asked Director Cruz and Stephanie as well, as all of you ask regularly, what are other communities doing? I was surprised that some are going a little bit more aggressively, others aren't, it's, it's all over the map. So, just, just for context, Alderman McGowan.
And thank you for providing that context. I guess I'm in agreement with Alderman Swanson's suggestion that we do extend this for 12 months as opposed to six. And I also feel that it's really, it's not nice to receive a notice saying that a, a person's residence is now in danger of having the heat shut off in the middle of winter. The whole, the point of, of this like bill deferral, you know, program was to give our residents support during this unprecedented horrible pandemic. So I do think that we should act, we should kind of continue the spirit of that and, and be as understanding as possible. And, I also, so I would really like to see us allow for a 12-month timeframe for paying back the whatevers due right now. And I don't know if our city website has any information about the LIHEP program that was mentioned, or any other local services, maybe just a link to the Kane County website and their social services. And so, I, I would like to see that on our website, perhaps in the area that talks about utilities, or wherever a utility consumer might go to get information. I'd like us to very, like succinctly provide that information, where to go for help, and, and to let them know, please also contact the city of Geneva if you have additional questions, or if you have, if you're having difficulty paying your bills. Just spell it out for them, because I don't think it's fair to just assume that consumers know that, that they can come to, that they could appeal to the city or to the finance department for additional information or resources, or even a, an individually tailored payback program based on whatever their difficulty situation is. So, and yes, I know that some people are just, are purposely chose to defer payment for financial reasons, but this is for, this program was not designed for tho, for those parties, this was designed for people who are facing actual financial hardship because of COVID. So, and I, I guess also, if I could add on, any, any type of like written communication or email communication that the city sends as far as bill collection, I think should also include resources for the LIHEP and, and maybe just a few others, so that we can be as helpful and understanding as possible. Because again, it just always goes back to the, it goes back to the beginning of why we created this bill deferral payment in the first place.
And currently, yes, and all that information is on the shut-off notice, which we currently, which we don't produce now, but pre-COVID, all that information was on the back, all their phone numbers to make those contacts. So that is how we did reach out to people that were in need at that.
Oh, good, okay, I'm glad to, to know that, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilbride?
How is payment history reported to credit agencies? And how will this be treated? In other words, if you go on the 12-month payment plan, is that gonna be considered as delinquent? And if they pay, are, are they gonna be included as being delinquent if in fact they go on the 12-month payment program?
No, they would not.
We do not report to the credit agencies.
No. They would, they would go to collections if they did not make that, did not pay that 12-month or six-month payment plan.
So if it goes to a collection agency, then it would be reported to credit agencies?
Right, but I'm, I'm saying for those, the ones that you're talking about for non-payment prior to that, they, we do not report to the credit agency. So if you're late paying your utility payment, we don't report that information.
Do you get inquiries?
From whom?
Credit agencies, as, as relates to payment history on utilities.
Nope.
Surprisingly.
No one ever calls.
How do you, how do you plan to go about communicating this to the 652 delinquencies?
So we, we will send out late notice, we will send out a notice tailored, tailored to their, to them to show how much is due, and all, and all the information that we've talked, we're talking about tonight. And we also send that same notice to the landlord as well, so they are fully aware that their tenant has not made payment on their account either.
Would that go with their utility bill? Would that be a separate mailing?
No, separate mailing.
Okay. And, do you anticipate that you'll be fielding a lot of, fielding a lot of questions as relates to this?
I do. I mean, I, I think there's gonna be enough people, a lot of people have tried, I mean, even there, the people that don't try at all, we do have a lot of people that have tried, you know, they may call, maybe their bill is a hundred dollars every month, but they're at least trying to pay 50 and make that attempt to get it down, because they do understand that in the end, there is unfortunately a, a lot to pay.
The, the expenditure side, as it relates to utilities, you'd indicated that there was, we've postponed $3 million worth of expense, or capital, long-term capital projects as a result. What would that, what are some of the things that would be included in that that we postponed?
That's, you know, it's fairly significant, and that, eventually that's gonna need to be addressed at some point in time in the future.
Sure. Bob Van Gescam, Superintendent of Water and West Water. Some of the capital expenses would be water main replacement. We reduced our sewer lining capital that we were going to, to do. We were gonna do roughly 650,000, we brought that down to 250, and that pretty much paid for the state street sanitary replacement that we did. There's also water meter replacement reduced by 100,000. We pushed back a replacement of a, the Vector truck for sewer cleaning and, and that, and also televising equipment. So it's, things like that.
Okay, that's about a million.
And then in regards to the electric utility?
Yeah.
The line replacement program was scaled back dramatically by about a third. There was in the current budget, a meter replacement program that we were gonna contract out to finalize the, the remaining meters with a contractor. That has been replaced. Basically, the, the focus within the current capital project within the electric utility has really just been on maintenance and reliability issues within the substations.
Alderman Burger?
Thanks Rita for being here tonight, and this presentation, obviously not, proud of it, I can tell, I can tell how much work you, what it's been trying to present and come up with the resolution. So I feel like we're talking about two things, we were talking about the people who haven't been paying or missed a payment, haven't paid back yet, but then also in the resolution it would be, let's see, all utility bills issued after October 21st will be subject to all provisions of the municipal. So, if I'm a resident and I've paid up to now, and I'm, but you know, I lose my job in November or something, I'm having trouble paying, I will be subject to the, the fines going forward.
Yes, yes. But if you, like Stephanie mentioned, I mean, there's two waivers on an annual basis. If you've not used any of those waivers, you can always make a phone call to finance and we would waive those penalties for you.
Okay. And then, back to the people who haven't paid, so, let's see, utility account holders with past due amounts, who do not elect to participate in the repayment plan, will be required to pay all past due balances and faults. So, so if I'm a business, I owe, you know, three months and I get this notice and it's saying you can, you know, pay that over six months or 12 months, whatever, if I don't choose that, what happens to my past due?
That amount stays on the utility bill and could be subject for, to shut up at a later date.
Gotcha. And fine, well fine, or no fines going backward, but fines going forward?
Correct, yes, correct.
Okay. I would, just in general, I'd agree with what's been, you know, expressed up here, that I do understand we wanna protect our utilities and, and our funds, but I would like to see maybe a 12-month, kind of more, longer grace period and, you know, really work to avoid any kind of disconnect threats or otherwise around this winter, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kassarag?
Obviously, I agree that we need to be sensitive and careful about the COVID. I, I guess, I just wonder if we can just put this all off for a couple of months. So kind of as presented, but maybe not implement it until the, the payment plan starts maybe in December. We take that disconnection date, put it in April or, or whatever. And that just seems like it gives us some time. Who knows what's gonna happen in the next few months? And I feel like it's also more resident-friendly than coming through at a time when we're being told things could really hit the fan in the next few months, nobody really knows. I think there's schools going back, every, everybody's really on nerves, pins and needles right now. And I think getting a notice about your utility bills, and if you're in the arrears, then that could really add some bad stuff. And so, I guess, you know, my thought is, I, I'm comfortable with the six-month plan, I see the benefits for the residents, they avoid the fines, they get it paid off over time. I mean, that's very beneficial for somebody who's been in arrears, but maybe it's just not the right time to implement it exactly right now. We're gonna have to do it, we're gonna have to do it soon, but I'm not sure, I feel like the timing in October and December shut-off sounds right, seems right to me. Maybe we could stick with this plan, but implement it more, like I said, in December. Would there be any impact, major impact to the city that you could define if we just put it off for a couple of months?
I just don't know that, especially because right now, electric bills are far higher, because it's, it's the summer months, and I just don't know who would still choose not to pay and who would pay. So I really don't know what the effects would be if we wait three months.
Anything else?
I was, I was gonna say, is there a way sort of to deal with that? I, I've been thinking where if they are having trouble, maybe they have to submit an application to one of these nonprofits. We don't know what's gonna happen, that's fine, but they could submit that application, let us know they applied. I don't know if any of this is legal, but as a way of proving that they're really struggling. You know, an application to this nonprofit for assistance would say, okay, you're real, if you're just not paying because you're just taking advantage of the system, I don't think you're gonna go to that extent of, of filling out an application for assistance. So we don't need to evaluate the application, we don't need to know the results of the application, but it's just like, here you go, I did submit this, I am having real trouble and I'm looking for help. And maybe we could help weed some of those people out, I guess.
I just don't know if they would share that information with us.
Then they have to pay their bill.
The third parties, they may not.
I think, I think part of the concern that we're trying to address too is, is just starting that communication, because that's what we have found absent COVID. Forget COVID, forget, just in normal times, there are those people who don't pay their bills, don't communicate with us, they get noticed, they get noticed, when it comes to disconnect day, then all of a sudden, maybe they'll call, maybe they won't, but it's, it's trying to open that, because we try to work as much as we can with individuals. If we know that there's a hardship, we're not gonna go send somebody out to turn off the electric, especially if we know that they're not gonna even be able to pay to turn it on, you know, so we try to give them those resources. So I think that's part of it, is trying to figure out how to start these conversations so that, so that people know we're willing to do, you know, work with them, I don't know.
Alderman Kavan?
Well, I have a couple thoughts. I, I think there's been a lot of, a lot of good ideas and discussion. I have concerns about not doing anything at this point in time, because as other people have said, I wanna be empathetic towards everybody who's been impacted, certainly, and I know that there's a lot of people out there that are, but I see a scenario in my head where, okay, if we don't do anything today and then we come back and have this discussion in December, well, what happens if things are still in the same condition that they are right now? They haven't improved at all, they're not any better? Hopefully they are. So then what do we do in December? Do we look and say, okay, well, this is a really tough time, we need to move this another three months down the road? I mean, I guess in my opinion, you can only, you can only kick this can so far down the road, and if you don't do anything today, what are these balances gonna look like in December, when there are no penalties and there is no other communication that goes out? And what happens if we find out in December that we didn't do anything and these reserve balances that we just looked at are not in as good a condition as they are? What would we have to do then? Would we then have to say, oh, you know, crap, we're, we're in trouble, so guess what, you people that are in the arrears? We need this money in the next two months. We need this money the next three months, or this is gonna cause a problem for the city or maybe some of those additional taxpayers. I mean, I, I think that there are some very good points made. If what we need to do is extend the payment period to 12 months, so at least the communication could be started in October, I don't have any problem with that, like I said, I'm not, I understand how difficult this is for everybody and I understand it very well. But I think getting that started and then if, you know, as far as the disconnect date, okay, so make the disconnect date April, but at least get that out there because, and it's, you know, who knows what the percentages are, but there are definitely probably people on the list that would be able to pay, which would help the reserves and the balance and start trying to fix the problem. which would help the reserves and the balance and start trying to fix the problem. Again, it's not that I am certainly empathetic to anybody, but I'm afraid that if there is inaction for a few more months, that might just exacerbate the problem. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else on the general discussion?
May I answer first?
Of course.
Just a hypothetical question. If for some reason it was found that there was some type of, like, shortage in the electric utility fund, and it was like some type of like emergency thing or some other like unknown factor, can then the city move funds on a temporary basis from the general fund to the electric utility? And then it would be like repay, just as we have with other funds? And I don't anticipate that happening in this case at all, but I'm just curious.
I would first question what other funds we've done that with because we aren't allowed to move money between funds. We make a transfer from the general fund for capital projects, but they're related to the general fund.
Okay, that's probably what I was thinking of.
Okay, but as far as like from the general fund to the electric, or the electric to the water, or the water, there are ways to set up loans, but you still have to pay interest. You still have to follow all the same almost covenants as if you do if you're borrowing money from the outside. And quite frankly, I think your general fund is going to have a harder time. The general fund is not going to have the money to loan the electric. I mean, right now, I think the electric is probably our most, solvent isn't the word I'm looking for, but the most funded.
Yeah.
Funded fund. So, so, yeah.
I was just wondering.
Yeah. And I think the one thing we haven't talked about is electric bonds will be paid off in 2022.
2022.
So there are some covenants that we have to make sure we meet there. And then water, we have the wastewater loan that we just did for our wastewater treatment plan upgrade, that there are covenants with that that we also have to be mindful of. I think those are our biggest concerns. Certainly, capital projects, we know, everybody knows because we went through this back in '08, '09. Anything you defer just adds on to that next year, and that just makes the cost in the future go up. But for the here and now, the concerns are, what are your debt covenants? Can you continue to operate the utility and provide the services? And if there is a water main break or something like that, do we have the resources to be able to go in and fix those? So it's not an easy topic, and that's, again, we've delayed, delayed, delayed even on this conversation so that we can have this conversation and figure out where we do go next.
Alderman Maladra?
It is a difficult conversation, but I think that one thing that helps it is if we have some modeling in front of us, some numbers that we can look at. To Alderman Kavan's point, and I think even Alderman Swanson's point, if we know, if we have some models that show us if the situation continues like this through December, we're going to see X number of businesses in addition to those that are currently delinquent. We'll see an increase of X percent in our delinquencies, et cetera, et cetera. Then we have some numbers that we can look at and we can use to sort of help us get our arms around making very difficult decisions. You want to avoid moving too early, but you also want to avoid moving too late. Everything I've heard tonight, I think, sounds reasonable, but without some numbers, I can't substantiate how reasonable or anything. The 12-month idea, I think, is great, but I don't know if we're going to get ourselves into trouble over 12 months or anything like that. So we have to make some assumptions, and we have to say, given these assumptions, this is what will happen to our balances.
In the spirit of context, again, if I may, Director Cruz was not with us, but you were certainly in municipal finance at the time during the housing crisis. I don't recall the City of Geneva doing anything with respect to how we've done it now in terms of deferrals, whatever, for our utilities.
We did not.
We did not. Okay. And I don't even remember having a discussion about even considering doing so.
Yep.
St. Charles has gone forward. Potavia has gone forward. In fact, Potavia went forward several months ago, two months ago. And of course, we all own utilities. So it's not a com-ed issue, per se. It's not the mothership. Com-ed has programs out there, we know. Have you heard anything from your neighbors with respect to those operations in other communities? And, A, how they've been received? Because I haven't heard boo from Mayor Shulke in terms of any pushback.
No, I've heard nothing either.
Just here from Mayor Regina. Okay. The main motion's still on the floor, folks. There is no amendment offered yet, so just to clarify. Anyone else? Alderman Bruno?
I would move to amend the resolution to include a 12-month payback period. And no shut-off until April. You can make separate motions. It seemed like we had consensus on 12 months.
Effective, may I ask, effective when? Beginning, do we still roll this out November 1 with communication?
That it would be as-is, but instead of six-month payment, 12-month, if there's any other motion by...
We'll have to take one at a time. On this amendment, is there a second to Alderman Bruno's amendment? Seconded by Alderman Swanson to discuss the amendment now? Anybody? Everything else remains the same, et ceteris paribus, as they say in economics class? All things remaining equal? Swanson, yeah. Okay. Anyone else regarding the amendment? Voting on the amendment, simple majority rules the day, whenever Ms. Dawkins is ready?
And it looks like we start with Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berhert?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
The amendment passes. 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero absents. So the main motion as amended. Alderman Swanson?
I would like to add a further amendment that we would not threaten shut off or certainly shut off any utilities until April, be it March 31st or April 30th. Let's make it April 30th. And I would have the start of the program be December 1st. Let's get through this election cycle, which is causing enough angst for everyone else as well. Two amendments there. We'll start it on December 1st, and no shut-offs until April 30th.
Can I just, for clarification, would penalties start to, would we start assessing the penalties, but just no disconnects?
If, yes. If they do not live up to the agreement, yes.
And I'm not, so there's two different things, and I'm not trying to conflate it. The penalties would be assessed to current bills only. So that's the penalties I'm talking about, not past bills.
Understood. Yes.
Just to clarify prior to a second, in terms of communication, that means that communication would not go out till the end of November, or are we still remaining, everything else?
Now, he said December 1 start date, 4th. Or is that for communication?
Is that for communication?
That would be the program.
The program, got it.
The program itself.
We start programs on, what, the 21st of every month?
Right, that's the issue.
To catch the cycles, we have to start on the 21st of the month. So what, but you're looking...
Perfect. Started on the 15th of November. That's fine, too. Just after the election.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, okay.
But what if the election is not decided?
I made my amendment.
Okay. And then, is there a second to Alderman Swanson's amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maladra to discuss that amendment. The floor is open.
I just need clarification. Are we talking about the fee, the start of the late fees starting for, you know, all customers, whether they're late or... Let's take the late people out of the new, you know, customers going forward. Are you talking about that starting in December or October? Under this resolution, it's October.
This entire program, I'm moving it back to December 1st. And here it was October 1st. I'm moving it to December 1st.
So it was actually October 22nd, but that's, so...
But I'm delaying the start date of the program.
To November 22nd, okay.
Because the November 1 date, I think, was what Rita had said we would start the communication regarding penalties and disconnections. Correct?
Every calendar, Rita?
I think we can work, I think we can...
We can do this.
We can do this.
I see a clarification. Yes, okay.
And it would come back to the council for final approval anyhow.
That takes care of me. Thank you.
Okay.
Just, we have a, anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? Alderman Kassarag?
I feel like if we're going to delay it, which I spoke and I agree with, then I feel like the First Amendment might be a little too much. If we're going to delay it to December after the election, whatever, then maybe the six-month plan sounds better to me.
That's not on the table.
But it is in...
We could vote on this one and then return, but that, yeah.
Well, it's discussion on this motion, right?
Correct, on this amendment, exactly. I have one question. With respect to the language Alderman Swanson offered and Alderman Maladra seconded, and I'm paraphrasing. There will be no disconnect and/or communication regarding disconnection?
I don't want the threat of a disconnection to occur in January when it's 10 degrees outside.
But we can send notice that your bill is late.
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, okay.
I don't want the threat or the actual disconnection to occur during January.
And of course, yeah, of course.
Until April 30th, after April 30th.
After April 30th?
After April 30th.
Okay.
Anyone else on the amendment? All kind of wrapped up together. Roll call vote. Simple majority rules the day.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berhert?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The amendment passes. 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero absents. We have the main motion amended twice. Anything else for the... And the Director of Finance understands that... Anyone else? We will vote on the main motion as amended. Dos. Unless there's something else. There's nothing else? I don't see anything, hear anything?
I mean, I didn't know if you need clar, I mean, you're allowed to make another motion.
I mean, I don't know.
Anyone can offer another amendment. That's why I'm asking.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you expressed that you might want to, so...
Yeah. So I don't know. Is there, just up for discussion? Is there any, anyone who feels similar to me that both might be a little too much? I don't know if there is such a thing as too much through this, but both the delay and the 12-month part, or do we just want to be that liberal?
Silence is a...
I have a response.
Well, yeah, but you saw the floor, so the general statement is, okay. Technically speaking, that would be Alderman Maladra, Marks.
So Brad, I think that what I said before about models helps. We have until December 1st to put together some numbers. And if, in that interim, we discover that, you know, 12 months would hurt the fund like more than we think, then we can adjust. Again, we could make it a six-month payment at that time. So I say we stick with 12 until we see some numbers that tell us it's going to be problematic.
Before I recognize Alderman Marks, would that, to your point, and I'll ask Director Cruz this question. In theory, there's no sense this coming back to a council meeting in a week. We could delay return to the council meeting at a later date in order to, quote, "make those projections," correct? Okay. So Alderman Marks, then McGowan. Okay.
And we could actually bring this back to another COW, those projections, as amended for the council to then consider it on that night to make sure we got, we captured everything everybody was looking for.
Yeah, we'll do that. That makes sense. Okay. Alderman Marks, anything? Okay. Alderman Ruby, anything? Now, I'm just throwing it out there, folks. If you think otherwise, I don't think there's any support for Alderman Kassarag's discussion purposes, so... Unless someone wishes to chime in and offer an amendment accordingly. Seeing none, hearing none, okay. On the main motion, Alderman Kilburg?
Would you restate the motion as amended?
Yes, it's going to be a doozy. You got it?
Yeah. So the motion is, the resolution as presented, however, amending to a 12-month payment plan instead of six months, there would be no disconnections or threat of disconnections until after April 30th, 2021, and the program would start after December 1st. I say after December 1st because I've got to work on the actual dates.
Right. Is that clear to everyone?
But everything else that was presented in the original resolution would then be intact, that we would start this program.
Yes, sir?
I'd move to amend that we include a clause, subject to review if, in fact, we see that the delinquency rate increases dramatically between now and the end of the calendar year.
Subject to review based on delinquency rate increase effective 12/31?
We see a 50% increase, I think, then we need to reassess. If we go to 900 or 1,000, I think that becomes a real serious task because we may encourage people now to not pay. Other businesses might say, well, we have these businesses that aren't paying, and they're accruing the money, and then they're going to pay at the end of the pandemic. I mean, it does lend itself to some abuse, more abuse potentially. Am I wrong?
No, I think you're absolutely spot on, respectfully, in terms of...
You know, you put a program in place and you don't have a clause in there that had effect, then I think that's an invitation to do more of this abuse.
My only question to the Alderman is, how do we define, at what level do we...
I said 150%. In other words, we are, what are we at now, 652? A 50% increase?
Turn your mic on, please.
A 150 or just 50?
A 50% increase.
50, okay, so...
So in other words, if we go to 1,000, wouldn't that get your concern? Wouldn't that concern you?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well, and could that happen?
Yes.
Anyone wish to second the Alderman's recommended amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Discussion on that matter? So we're using the numbers tonight of 652, I believe it was? So 50% of 652 is 9-something or other, so we... Alderman Bruno?
So just so I'm clear, so this is a, what gets triggered at this, again? This is, if we do hit that number...
It's subject to review then. In other words, we might want to change.
Right.
And I think, I think all the people that are on the program then, I think the people that are grandfathered in, I think they're fine. But anybody new that would want to get into this program, I think that would all be subject to review as well. No, we're not taking any more of that. We got enough of that.
That was my SAT score. It's actually half that, but nevertheless. We have a second to the amendment by Alderman McGowan. Any other discussion? On the amendment, roll call vote.
Berhert?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
10 affirmative, zero absent, zero nay votes on the amendment. So to the main motion as amended three times, or really, just the main motion as amended. Anything else?
And I'll just clarify, whatever happens tonight, we will be bringing this back to a COW before we take it to the council.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berhert?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you all very much. Wrong sheet.
Don't go far.
Item 4J, ladies and gentlemen, Consider Draft Ordinance Providing for the Payment of the Outstanding Parking Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2008 of the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Milodra? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so again, for simplicity's sake, I will summarize the next two agenda items as they are related. In 2008, the city issued commuter parking revenue bonds in the amount of $1,870,000. As of August 30th, 2020, there are two principal and interest payments remaining due on October 1st, 2020, and October 1st, 2021. These bonds are payable from the commuter parking fund's daily parking and quarterly parking fees. The bond covenants require the city to provide annual revenue of 110% of the annual debt service. For fiscal year '21, that would equate to $210,205. With the recent circumstances regarding COVID and a drop in commuter parking fees, it is difficult to estimate how quickly parking revenue will return to pre-COVID levels. As such, the city is unlikely to be able to comply with the bond covenants. While the city has enough cash to cover the payments, the bond covenants require actual incoming revenue. The bondholder, BMO Harris, has agreed to a prepayment, although there's no prepayment clause in the covenants, of the remaining bond payments in the amount of $379,838.75. The commuter parking fund has a current cash balance of approximately $1.7 million. Related to the bond payment, the second item for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the budget amendment for that additional expense relating to that bond payment. So if the first item fails, the second item is not necessary. If the first item is recommended for, to be forwarded to the council for final consideration, then the second item would be required as well. So again, finance Director Cruz is here to answer any additional questions. You may recall back when we made some modifications to not, to extending parking permits, we did mention that this item would be coming to you, because again, it's not that we don't have the cash balance, it's that we don't have the incoming revenue, which is what the bond requires, because it is a revenue bond.
Discussion on item 4J. Questions for either Ms. Dawkins or Director Cruz? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. Typically, when you have a debt covenant, you can ask the lender for a waiver on the covenant, and in this case, I think we have a pretty good reason to request one. We also have a wonderful argument that we have the cash in hand to make that final payment a year from now. So it seems odd to me that we're paying the balance due plus the interest, future interest, that we're not even going to have the loan outstanding. And so I asked earlier if BMO Harris was asked for a waiver, and it appears that they were not. So I guess, could we do that? Because it seems to me unnecessary, and quite frankly, a waste of taxpayer money, to pay this interest, given that we're paying off the debt a year early.
And just to clarify, because I know we throw these, the words around, it's technically not taxpayer dollars, it is the commuter parking revenue.
Understood.
So they may be taxpayers, but it is not taxpayer dollars.
Let me rephrase that.
The commuter parking fund is also an enterprise fund.
Let me rephrase that. It seems odd to me that we're rewarding BMO Harris for paying them early by giving them free interest. And I would like to see someone in the city of Geneva retain that interest. So my question is, number one, could we go back to BMO Harris and ask for a waiver first before we approve this? Or I guess, number two, I would oppose this just based on the principle of paying interest on a loan that we don't have outstanding. And then, three, it was mentioned that this could have a potential impact on our credit rating. However, when we do our credit rating reviews, we are able to discuss our current financial situation, and this one seems very obviously explainable. So I don't see that as an overwhelming reason to pay this excess interest. So my question is, I would prefer to see us go back and ask for a waiver, or ask them to accept a payoff not paying the interest that is not due before we approve this.
I can ask for the waiver. I can see what their response would be. And the reason why we're paying the interest is there, we are not allowed to prepay this debt. There is no covenant to allow us to do that. Therefore, in essence, we have to pay the interest that we've already, we've already committed to. So that's why we can't, we're not, we can't really cut that down. And I said, I can ask for the waiver from BMO, and I can find out what that response is, and...
And if we were to do that, we would pay the, pay the final payment a year from now, and we would at least have incurred the interest. However, we would also be earning interest on that asset during the timeframe.
And the interest rates today, it's not much, unfortunately, you know.
So that would, that would be my recommended course of action, just, just based on principle.
And, and just, if I may, if we ask, if council agrees that we should ask for the waiver, which is fine, are we amenable, though, to allowing us to do that in the time period between now and the city council meeting, so that this item can still be considered at the city council meeting, since our bond payment is due October 1st? So it wouldn't go to consent, it would come, just come back to the city council meeting, and we can update either then or in the meantime, whether or not they grant it.
The timeframe kind of dictates that it has to be that way.
I'm just, I'm just making that...
Yes.
Thank you.
The chair has ruled that an amendment's not necessary, but consensus from the group is that we will ask for that waiver via Director Cruz's office, correct? Okay. And then you'll return with that information? Okay. Anyone else? All, oops, say hand, nope. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. It's on J, 4J.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kostrog?
Aye.
Milodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt? Nay. Ruby?
Ruby, nay.
Motion passes with seven affirmative votes, three nay votes, zero absence. Item K, folks, since item J passed, is considered draft resolution authorizing the execution of a fiscal year 2021 budget amendment. Is there a motion? Alderman McGowan makes the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kostrog. Ms. Dawkins, I think you explained this earlier, any questions regarding this matter? As...
And again, if there's a waiver, then obviously this item would not appear on the agenda, because it would not be necessary. But if there's not a waiver, the item would be necessary to do the other.
Roll call vote.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kostrog?
Aye.
Milodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghardt? Nay. Ruby?
Ruby, nay.
Kaven?
Aye.
May I ask, may I ask Alderman Swanson, why the nay vote when you suggested the waiver? Just out of curiosity, if you're willing to answer, if not...
Because if we don't get the waiver, I still, I'm sorry.
I just disagree with the concept of prepaying it.
Got it, okay.
And I do know that banks currently are working with all of their customers and debt holders, and so, this doesn't make sense to me on principle.
The prepayment in general?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Well, folks, there's a motion to adjourn this meeting, but before I do so, let me ask a question. We have a special COW scheduled for after this that would require us, via consensus, to meet past 10 o'clock. Are we comfortable doing so? I have no sense, no, sorry.
Their next scheduled meeting?
Monday?
No.
No, incorrect.
21st.
21st.
Could we have the special meeting next Monday?
You could.
Good, it's up to the committee, sure.
Is time of the essence?
Yeah, it's...
I meant for the, for the special meeting.
Well, it's my understanding that there are several council members who want to talk about the, quote, "role of committee of the whole meetings in general," and there's others that want to talk about parliamentary procedure. So it's all defer to you.
I'd be interested in having a meeting next Monday, because I think this is going to be big.
Any objection to meeting next Monday?
No, I think that's a good idea.
7 o'clock start time? This will not be televised, as all policy discussions are not televised.
So we weren't going to televise this tonight?